Oregon City Commission to order. This is our regular meeting for Wednesday, June the 3rd. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Good evening, Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacida, Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As you all know, this is Oregon's 150th birthday, and in honor of that, Oregon City is having a sesquicentennial moment this evening, done by Commissioner Rocky Smith. Rocky?
Several moments twined together. The utility known today as PGE was formed in 1888 by Parker Maury and Edward Eastham as Willamette Falls Electric Company in Oregon City. The corporation installed a hydroelectric generator at Willamette Falls to provide electricity to Portland. In the process, this corporation completed the first long-distance transmission line in the United States on this day, June 3rd, 1888. Electric trolley service arrived in Portland the next year, in 1889. Seventeen years and twenty-odd companies later, Portland Railway Company and the Oregon Water Power and Railway Company consolidated in 1906 to become Portland Railway Light and Power Company, the predecessor of PGE. Portland, by 1924, claimed the third-largest narrow-gauge streetcar system in the nation. In 1932, the utility renamed Portland Electric Power, and the PGE name came in in 1948. Also, as many of you know, Oregon City now honors that history with three bus trolleys. The first named Helen after the first trolley car in Oregon City, the second named Josephine after Josephine Hunsaker, and the newest trolley Marguerite, named after Miss McLaughlin. The Hunsakers were one of the earliest families to immigrate to Oregon, and encouraged the rest of their clan to come west. In 1852, Josephine's family arrived in Oregon City. Josephine was loved by all. Unfortunately, she and her family were struck by typhoid. Dr. John McLaughlin, the father of Oregon, heard of their plight and came down from Fort Vancouver to personally render assistance. He brought a special gift for Josephine, a cutting of a pink Mission Rose bush to be planted outside her bedroom window. The rose thrived, but sadly, she and her brother died in the spring of 1853, and were buried in Oregon City's Mountview Cemetery. A cutting from that rose was planted at the foot of her grave, and still remains today and blooms every spring. So what ties these sesquicentennial moments together? Saturday morning, the Grand Floral Rose Parade, sponsored by PGE, focusing on the rose history and the city of Portland. The trolley Helen will be driving down multiple streets in downtown Portland, along with Dr. John McLaughlin and many other people from Oregon City's history. So I would encourage all of the residents of Oregon City and Oregon to come out for the Grand Floral Parade on Saturday morning or watch on television.
Right. Actually, there's another link.
I object to the pronunciation of John.
I apologize.
How do you know how he said it?
I think he has personal knowledge.
It is a name that I portray, and I pronounce it as I feel it should be pronounced, and it's McLaughlin.
Well, all right. I'm glad I'm going to be portraying Sam Barlow. It's a lot easier to.
And I will tell you, there are many diaries that are written, and you'll see, of course, that a lot of the spellings in these diaries were phonetic. You never see one where that my name is spelt with an F. It's always spelled phonetically with a K in those diaries.
We have a little addition to the sesquicentennial moment, a little living history. Another connection, speaking of connections, the Rose Festival theme is bridges, so we think we have a few of those around here as well. So, next, let's move into citizen comment as we bridge into our business agenda. We have two people who signed up to speak. If you wish to, please fill out one of these cards, and then you may come to speak to us up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Just be sure if you've written clearly that all you need to say is your name and the city in which you reside. So, William Gifford, followed by Brian Watt. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I have two comments. One is a personal comment. My wife and I attended a grand opening of a restaurant downtown, which I, the name won't go unmentioned, but the initials are the verdict. And we noticed that across the street, it seemed very peculiar to us that in that pleasant evening hour, we were sitting outside, that the parking meters across the street dedicated to county, nobody could park there. And it seemed odd to me that if we want to encourage people to park downtown in the evening, that those should not be dedicated county parking after some reasonable hour, six or something o'clock. So I would just like the council to consider that sometime. The other, I'm going to change hats now, is Secretary of the CIC, the Citizens' Involvement Council. Our chair was unable to be here tonight, and he asked me to make a comment about the fact that we were presented, the CIC was presented at our Monday meeting, some information regarding a joint project between PGE and ODOT as consideration of property in West Lynn for the development of world's largest solar collection. And it appears as though West Lynn already has a process in place for citizen involvement. And I am surprised that this issue has not been more carefully addressed in Oregon City, and certainly want the Citizens' Involvement Council to be part of that process, please.
Yes, thank you. I believe we've just gotten notice of that about a week ago, so thank you very much. Now, was the timing of your comment about the parking at the courthouse have anything to do with the fact that the chair of our Clackamas County Commission is present with us this evening? Or was it just coincidental with the parking study that we've just?
My time is up.
Thank you. Next, Brian.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Brian Watt, and I'm from Oregon City. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Oregon City Swim Team as a swim dad and also a citizen of the city of Oregon City. I believe some of you probably recognize me as a recent applicant for a metro enhancement grant, and although we fell short, somewhat below the line there, the project still remains unfunded, but we're trying to keep it on track. The effects of not getting a grant, not getting this project funded, not only affects the Oregon City Swim Team, but also the high school swim team, Gladstone High School swim team, Master Swim Team, and a lot of other entities that would use those blocks. Now, growth of the Oregon City Swim Team has been phenomenal in the last couple of years, with about ninety-plus swimmers now on the rolls. These swimmers represent about seventy-two families, and they're predominantly from Oregon City, but also a full fifty percent of families from other communities, including eighteen families from West Lynn. I'm certain you're aware of the issues at the pool and the letter that was issued by the state that closed three of the six blocks for competitive use citing safety issues for each of the closures. I believe you also know that we have been very busy working with city staff and vendors to come up with a viable solution for each of the three issues. We have estimates for all three projects that were obtained during this process, and vendors that are fully aware of our concerns and needs, as well as timing constraints, with the pool closure in September of this year being the optimum time, we believe, to execute the plan. Along the way, city staff have kept the state and county in the loop, informing them of our progress, thus ensuring compliance with state directive upon project completion. Here's the bottom line. The total cost for the three projects is estimated right now at around $18,000. Having done some significant fundraising as of late, the Oregon City Swim Team is prepared to fund one-third of the total project cost, and tonight, on behalf of Oregon City Swim Team, I'm asking for your support in funding the remaining two-thirds of the project cost. The Oregon City Municipal Pool has a great legacy. The pool has been in operation since 1965, and to my knowledge, has always been a competitive venue. It was in 1972 I began my own competitive swimming career, right there in lane one. As programs and pools are vanishing all around us, the city has already committed itself to maintaining and revitalizing this venue, and we have seen the ongoing maintenance and projects that will sustain operation for years to come. And it is our belief that the city has a real chance to move forward, continuing to revitalize our pool, and regain our competitive venue by taking this action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you say again what that total cost is?
Eighteen thousand.
I was looking for twelve.
I heard that.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. We'll go into our business agenda as we look at the agenda this evening. Because we have some elected officials especially, I'd like to grant the courtesy of moving 7A, our wastewater treatment agreement forward, if I might. Are there any other items that any Commissioners would like rearranged? Hearing done, we will then take the agenda with that one first, and then the order in which it is printed. So, first of all, we have discussed the wastewater treatment collective partnership agreement. I believe this is our third meeting, and we held it over so that Commissioners could have a better opportunity to delve into some of the background of this long, laboriously negotiated and carefully put-together document. So with that, I'll turn that over to our city manager. And why don't, Chair Peterson, might you come up to the microphone, so that you can be available to respond to any questions? Actually, did you have any opening comments either about this? Okay, great. Mr. Patterson?
I always follow the lead of my county commissioner. I don't have any opening comments. Actually, I think we've kind of been through this. Again, the document you have is more or less, as I've indicated to you before, bylaws for an advisory committee to the county board. I know there are things I think that all parties would like to see different, and things to include in there, but again, the agreement, besides an advisory vote, doesn't really provide much more than that. If we choose to not be part of the agreement, and again, you can do that, you could enter into it now, or at some future date, I assume, basically what you're doing is removing yourself from a seat at the advisory table. So beyond that, I could entertain any questions you have. There was one question I know that was asked, that I've been able to get an answer for. I actually had that answered, and I brought those agreements. The question had to do with the payment from Clackamas County Service District Number One to Tri-City. That is actually in the IGA between those two bodies, and I do have a copy of that agreement if you wish to have that. This is not the signed copy, I just got that later today, but this is more. Okay, I'll hand that out to you.
Great, thank you. As we go forward here, I know that there are a number of issues that we've brought up at our work session and at the last city commission meeting, and those issues are very important to us. My recommendation would be that we, because those are important, and additional discussion if you wish to, that we negotiate with the county an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, for those particular issues, and they are, you know, use of gray water, the urbanization issue, and the mitigation or the impact fee for, since we do not get to remove the treatment plant off of our waterfront, but actually will be expanded there, and would be part of the solution to the problem. So I guess if I could ask for maybe your thoughts on that, and then also, I know, where are the other cities that are partners to this in their adoption of this?
Okay. So, everybody's in a different state. You're actually.
Montana.
Yeah. They all moved to Montana.
Paralysis.
They thought the water would be cheaper there. They're each in a different part of their process, and you would be, if you adopted this tonight, you would be the first ones, because you have been moving this along, which has been great. The city of West Lynn will be hearing it Monday night next week. They had an eventful study session. The city of Damascus is hearing its work session tonight, so they will not have that on their agenda for another couple of weeks then. But again, no large issues have risen up in Damascus. City of Milwaukee has had some discussions about the partnership, but we're actually not, to the partnership discussion, we're actually still working out a contract with them, which is a separate and distinct issue from anything having to do with this partnership agreement. So they haven't actually gotten to the next step, which is the collective partnership agreement, so they're probably a month away or two, because of the contract negotiations. They have not actually had a contract for how many years? Twenty-three? Nineteen eighty-six. So they've been on a month-to-month with us, because they are a customer, not part of the district. So they have that contract to deal with. Who am I missing? Unincorporated Clackamas County citizens. We've had representatives on the discussion about this, and they feel confident in this, that, you know, everybody is, you know, moving ahead. So I think that covers. Gladstone. Gladstone had a work session? No, they're still scheduling their work session.
Happy Valley.
Happy Valley. They had a work session that we were out there for, and it was, again, good questions, but uneventful.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I guess one of my concerns is just what you just spoke about, in the sense that essentially Milwaukee has the most to gain, in the sense that they, the big portion of this is the closure of the Kellogg Plan at some time. But they are months from even making a decision. We have been, I feel even kind of the last couple of weeks pressured, that it was a timeline that we really needed to make a decision quickly. My concern about that is that it's almost as if we're being encouraged to make this decision quickly, because all the other decisions are weighing on our decision. And, you know, if we're the only one at the point of making a decision, I don't see what the rush is. And so I.
Can I try and give you a timeline of why? What we're trying to do is that we have made a commitment in this document to move forward some of these discussions, so that we can have a final decision, or at least a final recommendation by the end of the year on the Kellogg issue. And it's one out of three separate issues that need to be dealt with in order for Water Environment Services, both districts, Tri-City and Clackamas County Sewer District One, to be able to make a decision about what's next. We're basically, we, the district, are stuck until that decision is made. We can't do any more types of investments, because we don't know which way to go. And so it's not Milwaukee, actually, that benefits from this, it's everybody, it's the entire collective, and that's why this is a partnership, that it doesn't say there's a specific outcome. And I guess the question that we have for Milwaukee is what is acceptable in the future under different financial scenarios? And the assumption, for a long time, has been, well, we just want it gone. But there's a whole range of opportunities to make it gone out of sight, or out of smell, but not necessarily gone from the waterfront. So, and that's all going to be based on financials, based on how much does Milwaukee want to put into it, versus how much other folks want to put into it in terms of CCSD One. So we haven't even gotten to the discussion, because we're not merging the two districts yet. This is not a merging, this is just how to manage that one joint asset, and what kind of impacts would the closure of Kellogg have on that joint asset.
But I'm not sure that answers my question in regards to why we are.
In terms of a timeline, we need to get going on the study ASAP for the health of the entire system of the region, so that we can meet our deadline, that we've made promises to all the partners, that we will have this done by the end of the year. And so the longer this goes on, the, we'll have, you know, a couple of months to actually try and make our commitment true. And again, it puts off a lot of improvements that we'll need to make, because we don't know which way to go.
Are you under a DEQ?
We are, yes. Thank you. That would be the other problem we have. We are under a DEQ agreement for Kellogg, and we have to make certain improvements, or show movement to actually decide what to do with Kellogg. And if we don't do that, then we will fall under the fines, and we will be charged accordingly. But we've been putting off the fines for the overflows into the river, based on the fact that we were moving forward with, looking at a solution.
Are there other questions? Chair Peterson? Commissioner Nacida?
I want to say a couple of things. First, I want to thank Chair Peterson and all of the people at Clackamas County that I've chatted with over the past couple of days for being very helpful in responding to my questions. This morning, I had a chance to go up to Mike Kinsey's office and sit down with him and Chris Story, and they just gave me all the time I wanted and needed, and, you know, in complete candor, answered all my questions, which really helped, you know, me in this whole process. I've been very active, and I appreciate the commission in granting me the continuance to make these inquiries, and I must say, it's been quite an education, because I do think that as far as the amount of money and consequences of this decision, that it's an important one, and which is one of the reasons I don't think it should be rushed. To share a couple, I even went last night, kind of as my own little self-appointed ambassador, up to the city council meeting in Milwaukee, to talk with some of the council there after their meeting about what their situation was. I get the sense that they're not even close to considering this. Mr. Kinsey and the folks in Milwaukee were also of the opinion that Gladstone would likely reject the agreement. That doesn't bear on my decision at all, because I think even if Gladstone doesn't join, this agreement could have merits, standing alone and without Gladstone's, and possibly or even probably without Milwaukee's participation.
Well, again, they have not taken this issue up as a city council yet. They are working out a contract. So, you know, you have to be careful, because talking to one or two counselors, they're probably, have been thinking ahead of where the actual council is.
Yeah.
They've not had any.
Yeah. I mean, just like us, it depends on the counselor.
No, what I'm saying is that they've not had a work session to go over it yet, so they haven't even scheduled that as a council to have the discussion of trade-offs and benefits and costs and.
Yeah. As I mentioned to a voice, on a voicemail I left, Chair Peterson, one of the things I found most helpful about my discussion with Mr. Kinsey today was sharing my interest, as I've shared with you, and I've shared with the, you know, commission here, of doing something environmentally healthy and interesting for the old Rossman landfill. And Mr. Kinsey made a suggestion that I thought was a tremendous one, that I'll pursue with the commission here and with the Tri-Cities partners, was to get the Tri-Cities advisory body to make a request to the Board of County Commissioners, as the governing body of Tri-Cities, to consider spending about $100,000, which he thought could be, come from the reserves, to do drilling and the study of what's down there, which he thought would be helpful for the county board and, you know, Tri-Cities district, just to know what's lurking down there.
In the old landfill.
As far as what's down there, and maybe some costs of what it would take to removal. I agree with the mayor that, I don't think that's contention on this. I think that can be done in MOU. I mean, everybody's been quite cooperative. I am very sensitive to the concerns Commissioner Neely has expressed, and I think the final comment I would make was, following up on what Mr. Gifford said, I attended the Citizens' Involvement Committee on Monday, and I was very pleased, I considered making this comment in my Commissioner's communication, but I don't mind doing it now. They're making rapid progress on reviving several of the neighborhood organizations that have, you know, gone defunct in the past. I did get a sense from the CIC body that they felt that this is the type of matter that should be brought before them. And because I don't feel we're in a hurry, and I concur with Commissioner Smith on this, I would like the commission to consider referring this question to the CIC for their opinion and recommendation. So that, those are my comments on this.
Ready? Commissioner Neely?
Yes, well, I'd like to query the mayor a little bit, because you set a separate agreement with the county, and to address some of these issues that we have. I guess with nothing in here indicating any specific benefit to the city of Oregon City, I would like to know what kind of a mechanism we're going to use. Are we talking about a joint study session to begin with? What's the process by which we would do so? And what would be the timeline?
I think it'd be discussed. Do you have comments on?
I guess I would refer to staff to come up with a memorandum of understanding, perhaps, that would come before you and come before us, based on what we know you'd like to be looking at, and what we've already committed to, and most of it is the same. So with that understanding.
Would you review that, just so that we all remember what we've committed to?
In this agreement, or?
No, the outside.
Well, in the studies, there's several things that we're going to be looking at, not just Kellogg. Kellogg is a piece of, again, the regional system that we are now having to be concerned with. The other part is biosalads, and then the other part is this water reuse issue. So it's the whole. The other portion that is on the table that you actually mentioned is the urban policies, the urbanization policies of the county in relation to sewer extension in this realm. There's a whole list of other urbanization issues that the county's taking up, but this one would be kind of within this realm.
And mitigation.
And mitigation, the impact. That would be the other one.
Yeah, and I'm never sure what you're talking about. But mitigation.
Yes.
But let me. You use your translates to money, doesn't it?
Well, and it could be, I think, as we discussed before, it could be multiple things, that where we intersect with the county, from parking study to land swaps to other things.
Let me offer kind of the issue that you faced, and I would ask Chair Peterson or Norm to correct me if I'm wrong here, but the agreement before you, again, is really the operational structure for the partnership. The issues which we talk about, and I mentioned that to you before, we can tackle them one or two ways if this partnership comes together. We could go to the partnership and try to negotiate whatever things that you want to talk about with the treatment plant. And I would say that, particularly as it relates to Oregon City's issues, that's probably not a very good forum, and I've explained why I didn't think that was a good forum. But other things, when we start talking about reused water and things of that nature, now that we're kind of into the plant expansion as it is, that's going to have to be more of a partnership discussion. Without the formation of a partnership, there is nobody to have that discussion, to make a recommendation to the county commission, and so in that regards, the county commission will have to make that, as well as these other issues that Chair Peterson is talking about. So eventually, we have no voice. And until the partnership's formed, there is no voice to deal with these issues on. That's what this agreement's about. In fact, it's probably regrettable that we went to such lengths to go through this, because I think it has confused what this thing is, because I think in some minds, this gives us greater authority, or other issues could be put in here. All this is, is a body to discuss those things, to make recommendations. All this is, is a body to discuss those things, to make recommendations. In fact, I stated that several times through that discussion, and I, you know, I've voiced to you before my concerns about this whole structure because I don't think it's the way you run a utility. But it's politically all that could be arrived at with a group we had at the table, and that's why it's sitting here. I think eventually, it's going to evolve into something that hopefully can operate a little bit better fashion. But I think the whole issue, because this thing is defined as a partnership, it looks like there's voting authority and what have you, has complicated and confused the issue. This is an advisory committee, and all this is, is how it operates.
And I would actually think it wants to further...it's set up to protect everybody's interests going forward because everybody has separate issues. And what you are talking about tonight are the Oregon City issues that you want resolved at some point through the process. But right now, there isn't a forum based on the fact that we now have this joint asset, that now you are being impacted by Clackamas County Sewer District Number One. And we're the board for both. What we need is an advisory board that brings those two districts together and says, okay, of the interest at the table, how do we make sure that every voice is heard? And, you know, whether Gladstone comes on or not, I would hope that they eventually come on because they need to have their voice at the table. That's all this is.
And we need their one and one-third vote.
Actually, if they don't come on, we'll have two. We'll have two votes.
This has to be rewritten.
It does. Yeah.
Yeah. It obviously set up making an assumption that everybody would want a voice at that table, and it's actually a pretty important table. Sometimes people ask for a voice at the table, but they never define the table. What this does is it defines that table, and it is important in the terms of...you don't just jump into a partnership without putting the bylaws out there so that you know how everybody is...the expectation is set. And it can be molded, and it's in there in three years if this isn't working the way we thought it would work. The governance issue is in there.
The other thing that enters in here, and again, you have to kind of have an appreciation for what we've been through to get to this point.
This will be the third committee.
Yeah. I was going to say, and the cost, just to get to the point we're at. If we, as the partnership, cannot get together so that at least we can have some tables to have discussions, the crucial decisions are going to have to be made by the County Board. If we're still fighting among ourselves and we're not having a forum to do that, all it's going to end up in is litigation, the inability to get to decisions, and in the end, it costs all ratepayers more money as well as it threatens the environmental health of the region because of the failure of the sewer system to be able to handle what has taken place here, as well as could result, and again, if we can't move forward on this, even though I think with the development of the plant, we'll be able to address that, could result in some moratorium for the economic development of this region as well. So, there's some key issues here that we need to...
And I think to acknowledge the process just a little more, I was on the first committee, the first committee, and it was...the room was hostile. It was volatile, hostile, and it took us a long time to get to where we could all agree that the second committee could work on more detail. So, it's...it really is a...it's hard to lift it up as being the document that, you know, an ideal document, but it is, I think, one of the steps along the way. And we have a lot to talk to the county about in partnership, and this can certainly be one of them. I don't think any of us are going to let the county forget what our issues are because they have not gone away, and we really do have some very serious ideas about the future.
The mindset for so long has been that it's the County Board of Commissioners that you need to sway. But through the regionalization of the system because of cost-effectiveness and because of the ratepayers and because of the environmental issues, the cities are your partners. And the cities are the ones that need to work together to make this work, or you end up with a litigation. And we've already seen that through Clearwater, and we've seen the lack of trust that results when, you know, a decision like that goes awry. So, I guess my plea is that every city is starting to realize that, you know, it's a conversation between the cities and the board being able to implement then the consensus. Because if there's no consensus between the partners, which are the cities and the large unincorporated area, if there's no consensus, then we can't move anything forward, and we ended up in a DEQ order.
Commissioner Neely?
I've had the pleasure of serving on the Commission through periods of times when there's been three different mayors. And one Mayor Fowler was the mayor, Dan Fowler was the mayor. The county was making presentations to all three jurisdictions that constitute Tri-City. This would be something that came in, but Tri-City ratepayers were going to benefit because we would end up paying lower rates. Same kind of presentation was made when John Williams was the mayor. And we've got a thing here that talks about an evaluation. "The partnership shall evaluate and recommend to the Board wholesale wastewater treatment rates to be assessed and to be paid equally by all party ratepayers." Even though this is something to be evaluated and recommended, the term equally is right in there very clearly. This was not what was presented to the three cities earlier on in the process, and this is something that I assumed was going to happen. We had property, we had some facilities that could be used, and the ratepayers were going to benefit by having this area used by North Clackamas Area. And that is not what is being presented here in Section 1.06D.
It's hard to go back and reconstruct two and a half years of conversations to get you to that sentence. But I think that of the folks that were at the table hammering through this, they felt confident that as we went through the process, having every voice at the table equally, with equal votes, that we would be able to come up with some sort of consensus recommendation that would be fair to all involved.
Well, and if I could just follow up on that, too. So, the $4 million is a negotiated fee that we get to use either...
Through the separate contract.
Through the separate contract.
It's not...
As was before.
Not...no, but this doesn't...this basically...am I wrong? I think we discussed this at the last meeting. That sentence has to do with when parity is reached.
Right.
When our growth trajectory hits their growth trajectory, when we need to raise rates as if we are growing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is where it gets confusing, and that's where, again, I think that document has some shortcomings in regards to what it means. You have a number of agreements, and I think the one you might want to look at is the IGA between Tri-City and CCSD. I think that's the one. Because again, as you recall, this was really a major point of contention as we began to look at, I'll call it the relationship. No one wants to call it a consolidation but me, so I'll call it a relationship between these two districts about how those rates would be. And there was really a lot of discussion and analysis about rates. And that's where we determined what the rate for Tri-City would be, which is actually lower than the rate that's going to be paid in CCSD Number One. Now, as we move forward and those do merge, I think that's what this document begins to talk about. But again, that decision is a decision of the County Commission as they have to look at the rate structure. That group can recommend. No matter what that document says, there is no power with that group to take action to do any of that or even to say, you can't go in that direction. We can recommend it, and I think the County Commission, again, if the partners can come together, can take that advice, and I think they will act accordingly. But when push comes to shove...
We have the power of the media.
Well, when push comes to shove, though, you still have to make decisions of what makes that utility function, and that rests with the County Commission.
Commissioner Nocita?
Couple of questions. One, this...I think this is the first time I've ever seen something like this.
For us all, yeah.
This agreement, I'm talking about the IGA. This agreement is essentially between the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
Lynn, did you sign for both parties on this? Has this been signed yet?
He said he had a signed copy. I think that one of the...the Tri-City District has been operated and maintained in partnership with the three cities successfully. And when they make a recommendation, it's in consensus, and it's well-thought-out, and it moves along. And that structure has been in place for a very long time and works. What the Tri-City District was basically asking for is that before any consolidation happens, that the Clackamas County Sewer District Number One get their house in order. So, we do represent two separate districts that have very different needs that now have a joint asset, and we're asking for you to create an advisory board that is based on the successful idea and foundation of Tri-City.
Wait, wait, wait. I appreciate what you're saying, but that is nothing related to what I was asking.
Yes, it actually is because...
Your question is reason why that is, and you can see kind of what we were grappling with this whole time. I mean, you just feel like you're kind of talking around the bush. Is the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners is the governing body for Clackamas County Service District Number One and for Tri-Cities. So, we worked through both of those groups in trying to come up with that agreement, but in the end, it is the county agreeing with itself to do what that calls for.
Right.
But you did have the input of, again, both those groups working through, and it was a collaborative effort to come up with that, which did fall short of bloodshed. We did have some interesting...
But I think the point is that we based it off of the successful work done in Tri-City. And that's how it's been set up, is because we know that those three cities have done a fabulous job over the years. And so, it's an acknowledgement of the work that you guys have done. And it's also an acknowledgement that they're two separate districts with different issues, and we have different issues to grapple with in each one.
This...I'm sorry. This predates me, obviously, but I'm just wondering if this Commission, my predecessor Commission, got to review this IGA?
I've never seen this before.
Okay.
I don't think any of us have.
Now, why would not the...
This is a document in making, I think, but I've never seen one before.
Actually, I think we've seen bits and pieces of it.
We've seen the concepts. I don't think we've...
We've had a couple of work sessions on that issue as well. And we did talk about the salient points, the important points, because again, we had when, as you...again, I gave you a little bit of a history where we started and we asked for a number of mitigation. That was a Clearwater issue, and then it kind of went to this. So, we were aware that we were kind of putting down those issues and would have to handle those later. We also were aware of the difference in the rate structure and that whole discussion because that was a point we talked about on several occasions. So, I think you did see this document, but I'd have to look back. I know we have talked about the points.
Yeah, the points for sure because each of them...
The mayor was at all the meetings, and Doug, I think you were the backup at those meetings of actually hammering out, yes, in over a year period, going to the meetings and figuring out how to look at this joint asset that was going to happen, how to move forward, and that's what this is.
Including the design of the Tri-City plant itself. I mean, we hammered on all of the issues that we, together as a Commission, decided were important, so it was a back and forth, definitely.
And in the end, you know, you do have a plan, which I like to classify that this is a marriage from which there is no divorce.
Commissioner Neely?
Well, the mayor mentioned $4 million, which is a term sure under rent. That adds up to approximately $4 million. Is this what you're talking about? It's under rent. There's three items.
Which number?
It's 2.5.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Number section two. And that adds up to approximately $4 million.
It's the 2.52, yeah.
Okay.
So, there was an acknowledgement from the partners to be, if everybody signs, that there was a disparity.
2.53.
And there were a couple of different ways we looked at that payment. One was kind of elongated rent process. The other was a more upfront payment, and we felt it was one of the best interests for Tri-City to get it upfront.
And I believe we don't have a restriction on its use. So, we can use it to buy down rates, we can use it for capital improvements and other things that may come along as we...
It's a management issue. That's the only reason why I would raise the question, particularly since the plant expansion is there. If we're going to drill into the old Rossman landfill, I'm not sure that's not a joint effort with CCSD versus just the expense that we would use the reserves out of Tri-Cities for.
Yeah, I'd put that over, too, I think. Commissioner Nocita?
I think at this point, I would like to move that we refer this to the Citizen Involvement Committee. Second?
It's been moved to second that we refer this to the Citizen Involvement Committee.
For review and recommendation by their July meeting.
I have a question. At their what?
At their July meeting. I don't want to push this out very far. I just...
When is your July meeting? July 1st? Okay. William, go ahead.
Let me ask this question, though, because again, what you're referring to them is, if you will, the bylaws of your advisory committee. It's one thing to talk about the Tri-City Service District and the agreement with CCSD. This other, I'm not sure that is the purview of the CIC. That is actually how you're going to voice your views and the processes outlined, whatever. You can choose to do it, but even if we decide to restructure that, it's going to be interesting to get there.
Can I ask a separate question? I guess I would ask two questions. One, if you do refer to the CIC, you might want to think about exactly what it is you're asking them for input on because, again, after three years of negotiation, there's a lot of history that you guys are asking really good questions on, and I don't know what more you can get out of that. But the...maybe the more direct question from your CIC is, after you've agreed to be in the partnership, what are the issues that your citizens would want brought to the table? And maybe it's part of the MOU, maybe it's part of the discussion with the other cities, but that is the forum to have the discussion that your citizens want to have and want to make sure that they protect their rates, they protect their asset. So, there's a difference between the partnership and what you're actually trying to get as an outcome.
Sure. I would respond by saying that when I attended the meeting on Monday, there were members of the CIC who did express a concern about the agreement itself. I don't necessarily share the same feelings that I heard, but I, given what I have experienced with the history of CIC, I do think that this is in their purview and that this is something that we should refer to them. And I think your suggestion is great that what issues the partnership, if adopted, should discuss is a good one, and I would add that to the motion. However, I do think that I would like to see the CIC discuss the partnership agreement itself and make a recommendation.
Commissioner West?
Well, with all due respect to the CIC, I think these kinds of agreements are handled at our level. And I think that once we have signed this agreement, that I like Lynn's, or Commissioner Chair Peterson's idea that...
Whatever.
That whatever the outstanding issues are that they'd have concerns with, to bring it back to us. But at this point, how could we expect the CIC to make an educated decision after all the countless work sessions and presentations? We have had, like we said, three different commissions I've already been on with this. It's just multiple years. It will just delay things and confuse the issue more, and it's really our responsibility to do this. And if there's outstanding issues that, like we were doing with the MOU, I think that would be a perfect opportunity.
I'd like to call on the co-chair of the CIC.
Yes, please.
William Gifford, please.
Watch out for your parking space.
Chair, borrow your microphone. Thank you very much.
William Gifford, slight correction, Madam Mayor, is that I'm not co-chair. I'm only the secretary of the CIC.
Oh, I see. I thought you and Damon were co-chair.
No, Damon maybe. No, Damon maybe is the chair of the CIC, Tom Guillaume is the vice chair, and I am the secretary. I am the co-chair of the McLaughlin Association, but that's not the hat I'm wearing right now.
Right, okay, got it.
And with all due respect, there needs to be some clarification. First of all, when Commissioner Nocita raised the subject at CIC Monday night, it was rather out of order. Just to be clear, the subject was brought up not during a new business section of the agenda, but rather during the roundtable, which was after nine o'clock, actually. The meeting was basically, we're just sort of wrapping up and saying what was going on in the neighborhood and this major subject was raised. I think the response that we tried to make was that this was a full agenda item, that if we're going to be discussing that agenda, we would not want it to be sprung on at the 11th hour. That we would want to know advance. We would want preparation. We would want information about it and so on. So that, I think, was the major concern is the timing of us finding out about that. And I understand that Commissioner Nocita was trying to get some input, but we were uneducated. We were uninformed about what the issues were. We did not have any preparation and we were not prepared to make any study of the subject or express really an educated opinion at all. The second point that I would like to make is that although I respect the opportunity and certainly if the city is serious about the credibility of the CIC, that this is possibly a role that the CIC should be involved in when it is full steam. Right now, it is not. We still do not have the neighborhoods activated. We are working on that diligently and making great progress, but I do not believe personally that the CIC, and speaking from the experience that I have from our previous CIC meetings, we are not yet prepared to be making decisions or even offering our opinions on these matters yet to be fully representative of the city. So if at all possible, I would respectfully decline the opportunity for the CIC to examine this without a tremendous amount of education and foresight and study. And we still don't have, even if we had all that information, we still don't have enough neighborhoods representing to give a fair representation of the city.
If I could respond, under the old CIC scenario, often they would invite a panel of people to give information and to me, that seems to be a very appropriate thing to talk... You know, have someone from Tri-City, have someone from CCSD, have... Because you'll want to know what the Tri-City plant is about and what its expansion means. And, you know, and spend, if invited, to spend an evening or two to understand the issues of wastewater treatment.
And it's possible that could be a separate, a totally separate meeting because right now, our regular business has our July meeting, which is the first Mondays.
Jam-packed.
Our agenda is already very full with all the activities that we have planned, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your response.
I just want to respond for the record that I appreciate William's comments. I would emphasize that William is speaking for himself individually and not for the CIC. And I would emphasize that I heard differing opinions that evening from what William is expressing here tonight.
Well, as we would expect, a group of independent people. Thank you very much. There is a motion already on the floor. And the CIC, I mean, I'm not sure what we want to do with that since they've declined to do that, so...
No, that's not... I have to clarify that CIC did not decline. William expressed his opinion. He did not speak for the CIC.
Okay, well, I understand that. However, there does, perhaps is a differing of opinion than in the CIC about what their developmental role is right now.
The point is, we could refer this to them at the July meeting. They could choose not to deal with it.
But I... Okay, I guess my point would be, should that delay our decision this evening? What new information will we have? Again, I think I asked this last time. I don't have any new information tonight that I didn't have two weeks ago and so I'm not sure what delay does. But these are all the negotiated points. That isn't new. It's new to you, but over the three years, we've brought these points forward and I don't think that'll change my... And I don't think that changes my view that the partnership needs to come together so we can start working on the issues. So I don't really see the necessity of delay. You can convince me, but I'm not sure. Are you ready to take a vote on that? The vote, the motion was made a second that we refer the IGA to the CIC for a recommendation. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah. Was it for a recommendation or was it for a review?
Review and recommendation.
It was both. So we're asking them for their opinion, which means that we would delay. I mean, in my mind, I read it as delay.
May I ask when the CIC meeting would be in July?
And our meeting is the second or something like that?
First.
First. Commissioner... Yeah, this question.
This is referral for this agreement, not for all of the other things that have gone on with... Because there's such a broad topic here. I'm thinking now, who of staff should we send to this meeting so we can make sure we can answer any question that comes up? I'm not the one. I can answer some questions. Larry, you know a lot. So we want to know how to prepare to, if we were going to do that, what's the... What does this look like to make it successful?
Let me say, I did not know. And yes, I mean, I did have discussions about this. I don't think I've seen this document. It's got a December 8 date, so I don't think we've seen it. The memo that I sent to the city manager, to the mayor and to yourself primarily dealt with this particular issue because I was not aware how this had really shaken out. And I think it's an important, I think it's a particularly important document. I probably would vote against the motion to put forward another one after the fact. I don't feel that there is urgency in voting on this person. It'd be nice to get the process moving, but in fact, no other partner has yet voted on this and I'm not that concerned about it. I would be concerned if we went beyond the end of July and taken an action on this. And in fact, I would not, I would not, I would introduce a motion at that point at the last meeting in July if we hadn't come to any kind of thing. But I guess a recommendation, I doubt that they would be able to do so, but they may have input in terms of questions and so forth. They would have. Obviously, we've had questions and some of which, really, for me, haven't been answered until this evening. And so I guess if you had dropped recommendation and said, just left the review piece in there, I'd be content with that. The CIC then could come if they had opinions and give those opinions.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, that would be okay. And that's something I can support a review of, the information. I would recommend that both of these documents actually be sent to the, for them. They could choose to spend as much time on it or as little time on it as they wish, but if there was an issue of them wanting to say, well, we better look at it at our August meeting, that would be a no-no for me.
Let me... Alex, that man has a...
No, no, that's not the motion. He's requested I review.
And in my mind, we don't need a motion for that. I think we can just ask that they review it at a schedule that they determine.
The point, well, no, because I'm not going to support this at this meeting. I will be either abstaining or voting against it and probably wouldn't support it until that review had occurred.
Which means they have to do it at their July.
And I understand they're not going to have that much information, but some of this information I just got.
Let me also point out with the IGA between CCSD Number One and Tri-City, again, I think we've talked about the salient points. The agreement per se, you haven't seen because that did not come to the city commission. That did not require a city commission action. As you see, that was a county board action and they took that action and that was not something... So even if the CIC reviews that, if they have thoughts, that should pass on to the Board of County Commissioners because that's not an agreement that you're a party to. That's those two bodies, which is Clackamas County agreeing with itself.
Well, I don't mind holding it over, but I guess as, you know, I've been a layperson myself and I've studied this for so long that I now, I don't think I even understand all the moving parts of it, but it really is a very, very, as we know, because we've asked questions now for three meetings in a row, it's a very complex issue. So I'm always happy to have our citizen groups look at things, but to have a knowledgeable presentation, I'm just worried that that rushes them and July is a tough time now that it's summer. And I'm not adverse to, again, having them look at it at all with a good knowledgeable presentation because we certainly have those people if they are available on that evening.
I call the question?
Okay.
Did you accept his...
He did. Yeah, he did. So the motion has been changed now to send, okay, to send the partnership agreement to the CIC for review.
At their July meeting?
At their, okay, it's a very specific motion at the July meeting. And it says nothing about adoption of the agreement. Okay, as assumed that we would adopt it after the review, I said, right?
And what about...
Commissioner West?
And then if they have a whole series of questions and then need another staff meeting, then where are we at?
Well, if we can't answer the questions. I mean, that's the whole idea of citizen input.
I'm not, I'm going to vote against this because of all the issues stated and that the CIC, and we have never made a formal policy of what kind of items we bring to the CIC for review and that I don't believe that this group is just... We just started this and I don't even know if, as William would say, I don't know if they're fully up and running. And what is it going to accomplish?
One more consideration that you take in as you look at this issue. If the CIC brings forth a number of questions, first thing, if you can answer those satisfactorily and are comfortable with, that's fine. If they bring forth a number of questions and you're uncomfortable or you want changes, then the group to put this partnership together needs to convene again and see if they can work through that. And again, if you have all the cities, which sounds like maybe doing some of that, maybe it'd be better if we just came up with a whole new program.
Yeah, every city would have to agree to any change that we would make. So that's kind of the fragile balance that we're in.
It's negotiation by committee.
Yes, Commissioner West?
I guess I feel that this is what I was elected to do, to make these decisions. I've sat through the meetings to review the information and diligently gone to all the work sessions and been part of the conversation and I'm ready to make the decision.
Okay, let me just make a point.
Commissioner Neely?
I was going to call the question. My question here, 1.06D equally among the parties, was not addressed until we had this. So I didn't have the information to make my decision. I mean, if we're going to put this law to us now, I probably would vote for it. I just don't have any problem with citizen review. CIC can make its own decision about the amount of time that should be here. This document here is for just background information to them. It doesn't involve any decision we'll be making. Now I'll call the question.
Commissioner Peterson, you had a comment. Doesn't sound like it. There we go.
It died. I can understand why there's the question of sending it for citizen review. The question that I have for the council to consider, and again, you know, really revolves around this issue of trust between the cities. And I don't want you to inadvertently send a message to the other cities that you're not trusting the partnership because I think you... No, but you could and I just want to let you know that the politics of this are very fragile. And moving forward, the question was, why rush into it? Why be the first? And to me, the reason is to be the leader. And Oregon City has been the leader on this issue all the way through with the representation that you've sent in both your mayor and city council and your city manager, really putting forward the city's priorities and getting a lot out of both of the IGA and the partnership agreement. Not everything, but almost everything. And then saying, but we also need to think regionally. And so I understand the inherent want to go and talk to the citizens about this, but I think it's a presentation and I don't think that you have anything to show yet because we don't actually have the regional partnership up and running. And I think because we called the question in the document itself that in three years, we'll look at the governance and see if it's working, what a great opportunity to take it and say, here's how things have been working. Here's what we've been benefiting from out of this agreement or not. And here's how we think we should move forward. But at this point, I think the leadership is up to the city council. Whether you have them review it or not, whether you do a presentation or not, I think it's up to you. And I really am looking to you and your leadership, so...
I am happy to support sending it for a looksee to any citizen's group. That will not deter me how, deter me how from, again, being ready to vote on the agreement.
Or you may deny it.
Well, I could. I could. Because again, I'm kind of concerned about delaying it.
Sending the wrong message.
Yeah, sending the wrong message to the others who are kind of getting on it. But anyway, let's vote on this. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West? No. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Okay, is there any interest in taking up this agreement tonight? Or do you want to hold it over till the first meeting in July?
My preference is to hold it over.
It would be the third meeting in July.
It would be the third meeting.
It would not. It would be the second meeting.
I won't be here. Second meeting in July? Okay, let's hold it over till the second meeting in July. May I have a motion for adoption, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West? Aye. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. See you again in a month.
Well, let me just make a comment here. Unless something very unexpected occurs, my intent is to support this particular, is to support this. But I don't feel it's a tremendous obligation to be the first to vote on it.
We are the first city, though.
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time with us and answering the questions.
Always fun.
Always a good time. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute break and come back with our business agenda. We are back in session and we'll continue on down the agenda with public hearing. The first public hearing, which is ordinance 9-1001 for the vacation of sections of Caulfield Place. And this is for... This is an ordinance. So this is for the first reading this evening. For the staff reporting that, is it Nancy Crashall?
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. You approved the initiation of the vacation of sections of Track C in Caulfield Place and since then, the process has continued. There was some discussion about the appropriateness of not having this particular tract available in the future for pump station and expressing concerns over the gravity sewer that now conveys wastewater from Caulfield Place over to our existing, our old pump station. And we asked the applicant to make sure that there was information provided to the commissioners so they could understand the kind of foundation that that pipe is laid on and the strengths that that pipe has to withstand erosion and... that that pipe has to withstand erosion and, I think the question was, the issue was voluntary.
Voluntary, that's right.
The other thing that we wanted to make sure is understood that if for some reason a pump station would ever be constructed at this, to serve Caulfield Place, there still is room to do it. And we could get even so tight as to put a small package pump station in the, in the roadway itself. So, from the public works standpoint, we feel like the decisions that were made to convey the wastewater by a gravity pipe over to the existing pump station are still our preference. And so, we, the Public Works Department does not have any issues with vacating a portion of the section of Track C for the, for the purpose of getting some more development out of this subdivision. I do, Monty Hurley is here. He's the engineer that represents the applicant, and I'm sure he'd be available to answer any other questions you have.
Okay. Do you have questions for the engineer?
I'm available.
I, I have a question, and I don't know if the engineer can answer it. I, I do know that our Trails Master Plan had identified a trail to go through this particular area, and I'm wondering if, in fact, we have a right-of-way dedication for a trail in this subdivision.
Monty Hurley with AKS Engineering and Forestry, one three nine one zero, Southwest Galbraith Drive, Suite 100, Sherwood, Oregon. I am representing Ryan Park Development, the applicant. And yes, the plat of Caulfield Place has an easement along Track E and through portions of Tracks A and B for a regional trail. So, that was done as part of the plotting process.
And Track D is not involved in that trail?
No.
Further questions of Mr. Hurley or Ms. Kraschner? Mr. Sullivan, you have a change?
Yes. If you look at the whereas clause in the first page of the ordinance, I think staff dropped out a, a reference. If you look at the end of the second sentence, the second line, you see where pursuant to is.
Mm-hmm.
We should add in there ORS two seventy-one point oh eight oh two, T.O., and then resume with the ORS on the next line.
Two, okay, two seven-one point two eight oh?
No, two three oh, oh eight oh to two three oh.
Oh eight oh, okay.
Okay. And this is the first reading tonight?
It's a first reading, so I'll have to read it in full.
In full.
That, that paragraph, anyway.
Okay. And further questions about this? We have discussed it before. Thank you. May I have a motion? Commissioner Neely?
Now, this is an ordinance, so is this a public hearing?
Yes. Oh, yes, but you can move.
I'd rather not move until we have public comment.
Yeah, we do need public comment. Okay. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who's come prepared to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. And now, Commissioner Neely.
Yes, I move first reading of ordinance number zero nine one zero zero one with the amendment that, that you will be reading into the first reading.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Mr. Sullivan for the first reading.
This is ordinance oh nine dash one zero zero one, an ordinance vacating sections of Track C of Caulfield Place in parenz number one, close parenz, a city stormwater tract all within the Caulfield Place in parenz number one, close parenz, subdivision plat in parenz, plat number four two three one, close parenz, Clackamas County, City of Oregon City, Oregon. The first paragraph should read as follows, as corrected. Whereas it appears that to the City Commission of Oregon City, Oregon, that on April fifteen, two thousand nine, Resolution Number oh nine dash oh eight was duly adopted initiating action on its own motion pursuant to ORS two seventy-one point oh eight oh to ORS two seventy-one point two three oh for vacation of two sections in parenz, Section one and Section two, close parenz, of Track C in parenz, the City of Oregon City, stormwater tract, close parenz, of the Caulfield Place in parenz number one, close parenz, subdivision, Clackamas County, plat number four two three one, Oregon City. Thereafter, the city recorder caused notice to be given by posting bylaw and that the matter of said vacations, together with a hearing of any objections or claims to be heard and considered concerning said vacation, would be heard and considered at seven P.M. on Wednesday, June three, two thousand nine, in the meeting room of the City Commission in City Hall, three twenty, Warner Millie Road, Oregon City, Oregon, and said hearing having been held, and the commission finds that the proposed vacation meets the criteria for vacation in parenz, that there is no present or future public need, that the vacation is in the best interest, that there would be no impacts to the adjacent property owners, close parenz, and that appearing to the, that the public interest will not be prejudiced by said vacation.
Thank you. Is there a further comment? The vote, please, Nancy.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. The next item of business is also a public hearing and an ordinance. This is, I'm going to write it here. The amendments to our municipal code, a large file that we've been working on for many months originating the Planning Commission, and we have those documents before us this evening. Mr. Grentlaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you recall, we had a, our first public hearing on this at the last, at the last meeting. This is a continuation of the public hearing. And really, the two issues that the staff at least had remaining for discussion was, one was the natural resource map. We've actually completed that map, and we've set that map before your dais. It's also on the wall. Again, those are the Title thirteen plans.
On the wall?
That wall. And, and actually, today, we received a, a letter from Metro saying that we do comply with Title thirteen, so we're pretty happy about finishing that process.
Good.
And if you have detailed questions about the map, Pete Walter is here, and he can run you through those. We, he did spend a lot of time working with the biologists at Metro. We had a lot of specific questions about specific areas, and we've worked through those to the satisfaction of Metro. Then the other issue which came up at the public hearing last, two weeks ago, related to the proposed rezoning. And if you go to the back page of your packet, you'll see a color map.
This, the one you just?
Yes.
Not the thick packet, but the agenda item packet.
Bag of six.
The thin one, not the really thick one. Yeah, exactly. And you'll see, we had a couple of property owners come in requesting that we extend the rezoning from single-family residential, which is the orange-yellow color on your map, and to extend that gray-blue color, which is the multi, the mixed-use downtown zone. And we actually took a look at that. Originally, we had proposed that parcel thirteen zero three oh, you can see that between Clackamas River Drive and Short Avenue. That was the original parcel we recommended, and, and we-
Is that the streets of?
Yes. And then we thought we could go ahead and add the parcel right next to it, one five nine seven five. We thought that was a logical break between Short Avenue and-
I think it's also a registry, local registry.
Yes. So, we thought that it would make some sense to, to add that additional parcel. We didn't feel like it made a lot of sense to go on the other side of Short Avenue. You're getting into more of a, an established, single-family neighborhood. And, and if we're going to start looking at rezoning in that area, we felt we needed to do some more public notifications. So, at this, at this time, we're not recommending any additional zone changes in that area.
So, you are recommending those two, and that's all?
Yeah. Originally, we recommended the parcel with the historic structure on it, and we've, and looking at it again, we've added the one parcel, one five nine seven five, and that's it.
Okay. Questions about that? Commissioner Nocita?
Parcel thirteen oh fourteen, is that the Kaufman site?
Yes, Kaufman Construction.
More questions? Commissioner Smith?
What property is this cemetery?
It's on, it's on, it's on.
Oh, so it is, thirteen oh one four.
Thirteen oh one four, okay. Commissioner West?
This past weekend, we had an issue in our neighborhood where the property across the street had, I don't know, an oak tree with about a three-foot diameter, and they were frustrated with raking the leaves. A senior citizen lived there, and they wanted to cut the tree down. And so, I was, I was mentioning, well, this is the kind of issues we grapple with at, at city, city council level. And I had also, we ended up solving the issue in my neighborhood because we're going to have, take advantage of Nancy Bush and all the, the ability to check out city equipment, and we're going to help them trim the tree and do a little cleanup for them, so to prevent it. But anyway, so, prevent them from cutting it down. So, my question is, I want to make really sure that I'm understanding where our tree ordinance is at. So, let me try to say it, and then you can correct me. So, at this point, we have, have some volunteer, we have a heritage tree program. It's volunteer, and we are going to expand the list of trees.
True.
And we do not regulate cutting down trees on private property like my neighbor is there.
If they don't have a development application in, that's also true.
Okay. And so, what happens with trees that are on a, developers developing something that's within, I guess, within city limits, a five-acre plot and he clear cuts?
Well, the, the site development regulations say that if you come in with an application, part of that application show where your building footprint is and where your streets go and those kind of things. And so, those kind of trees can come down. But, but for areas outside of the building envelope, we try to preserve those.
And we are currently in the process of pursuing a tree, a tree-city distinction.
We are. Tree-City USA.
May I go back to the other scenario that Commissioner West alluded to? If they clear cut before they come in for the application, then they just say, oh, I'm sorry?
Uh, well, first, we have to find out if that's, that's the case. So, we would have to be, actually check aerial photographs to prove that. And I don't know, Christine and Pete, have you, have we ever run into that situation? I'm not aware of any.
I thought we did out in Holcomb there. I don't know, it was quite a few acres. I can't remember the subdivision's name, past Holcomb School on the-
Holcomb, are you talking about Holcomb Ridge?
Yeah, the one, the one we walked in the mud, that they clear cut the oak savannas and-
Well, this one I was thinking was fir trees, but-
If the property in the question had a working forest or farm under the ORS definitions, they may be legally permitted to harvest timber on that, which would not be covered under, covered under our tree regulations. There is a canopy coverage limitation on removing trees within the water resource overlay district, but you have to look at an aerial photo and prove that ten percent or more of the canopy on that lot was removed in order to trigger some kind of enforcement action.
And what would that trigger?
Pardon?
What would that enforcement action be that it triggers?
Probably they would have to come in and do a water resource review application and then mitigate.
But, but most properties aren't in, within a water resource overlay zone, correct?
Right, correct.
So, then we have not much protection on that.
That's true.
That's true.
Good. I think that topic, continue. I think you finished your question.
And then I just wanted to make sure on the demolition by neglecting denial.
Why don't you stay there? We might have business for you.
For instance, a property owner owns multiple properties in our neighborhood, their properties are falling into disrepair. I don't think their intention is to, well, they're just not taking care of them. So, what's, what's going to happen? What could happen?
Okay. As soon as the ordinance is adopted, so day one of this ordinance being enacted, which is thirty days after the second reading of the ordinance, if we got a code enforcement call, let's say, by a neighbor concerned that one of the historically designated homes, which is, of course, the first threshold, they're worried that there is demolition by neglect, then they would start that process. And the key thing is, it's not just aesthetics, it is that the neglect is potentially affecting the structural stability of the home in the long run. So, there could be things, I mean, sometimes, yes, when you, when you leave, the paint is coming off, that may be affecting the, you know, the-
Condition.
Condition because the water's coming in, and that, that's the long run. But it's that, you know, investigation with the building official to really look, is this an aesthetic issue or is this a structural issue? And if it is a structural issue, then it goes down through the demolition by neglect process.
Was this sort of initiated from this, from a, I won't mention the name, but a building on Seventh Street that had a fire, and they did not repair the roof, and people thought because they didn't repair the roof, that the building further deteriorated from rain to the point where it could not be built, resaved?
I think that's a very good example. I don't, I don't think that that necessarily was the driving case. That just kind of added yet another example to, definitely a portion of, of the citizens who wanted to see this. You know, the historical review board was always frustrated, and I think for a long time, they always wanted this, but didn't really think that there was political support for it. And, I mean, Commissioner Zeta took the neck out and said, well, we'll find out if there's political support for it, and, you know, that's why we put this forth. But it's been the hope of the historical review board for a long time to do this.
Right. Commissioner Smith?
Just because of the question on the cemetery, is, what if any protection is there for, for that?
For the cemetery on the Kaufman?
No, I mean, is that on private property?
You know, unfortunately, I'm not the, I don't have that information readily available. I do know on the, if you look at the tax lot, the cemetery is actually identified out, and I, they may have a private easement, or there, there might be some easement, or might be involved with the state cemetery.
I think that's something we need to know.
Right. And I can look more into that, but tonight, I don't know the exact answer.
I'm going to come back to the issue of cutting in the canopy, if it was, if it was ag forest tree line to begin with. I presume that's before it's annexed into the city, though, right? If it's annexed into the city, then our tree code applies, so they just can't go cut down the trees anymore.
Yeah.
Or not.
True.
Okay. So, yeah, so, okay. Well, I just want to make sure I understood that. That's simply because it's not in the city, so we don't have the, we don't have the control.
We don't have teeth anyway.
We make the distinction between an annexation application where there's some discretion by the city commission-
Right.
Yes.
And a policy would be forthcoming for you to review, where you have a look-back policy to see whether tree cutting had occurred prior to annexation. As far as development review application within the city boundary, once it is in the natural resource-
Microphone, Pete.
Oh, sorry. What, if the natural resource overlay district or, is, is adopted, then there will be limitations on canopy cutting as well in-
Would we, I will ask the question, though. If, if, in fact, they cut the trees down, they had not annexed into the city, then what's the, what, what, what can the commission do? I mean, can it deny the annexation simply because the trees were cut before annexation was requested?
You could, you could.
Could require mitigation.
You would, or you could require mitigation and then approve the annexation.
All right.
Which is the way-
How, how long before they've made the request? For one year, two years, five years, ten years? I think this is, this is an issue because-
That would need to be specified in the policy.
Because I think it needs to be clear. I mean, for one thing, the county, I don't think, can regulate the tree cutting in areas that are designated for forest, and I, I think we have to be really clear that there's at some point that it is not legitimate to, to apply that standard. And I don't, I, we don't have that in the court code here, is that right?
Yeah. And like the Swiggo's annexation policy, they've chose five years.
Okay.
And that's, you know, in, in the previous city commission hearing, the, the annexation policy will be a separate process where we'll go through and work with the city commission. It's not continued as part of this.
It's not part of the municipal code.
Okay.
Yeah. So, just, while I finish this subject, so, all of the other tree issues we've talked about, besides the annexation one, are included in the code, like Commissioner West?
That's correct. We have a new chapter for tree protection and for development review properties. We have a process within our community forest chapter for designation of heritage trees.
Right.
But there is nothing in there about an individual that takes his tree down on private property without a permit?
Yeah, no, I knew, I knew that, but, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Please forgive me, but I don't know the procedure, and I'm feeling extremely ill, and I'd like to ask to be excused for several moments.
Sure. Let's continue there. For the questions, Commissioner Neely?
I want to make certain, I really didn't look at that piece, but it just occurred to me, we had various setback requirements on streams and so forth. I understand, we've drawn back those amoeba, big bubbles that we had around it, but the setback requirements have not been changed at all.
That's correct.
Yes.
In fact, what we did for the Title 13 protection is, we added, isn't it 10 feet on each side?
10 feet.
Just for a possible margin of error.
So, you mean, it's 10 feet greater than whatever it was?
Yeah, so it's now 60 feet on both sides.
And if it was 200 feet, it's now 210?
I believe so.
Okay, so everything's had an initial 10 feet added to it.
I think the idea is, you can accept the 60 feet or the 210, and just accept the margin of error. If you want to get that 10 feet back, then you pay for delineation.
You have to prove it, basically.
Through that. So, that's kind of the idea, you know, you don't want to pay for the delineation, you don't care about the 10 feet.
Now, the other thing, the other thing we did for additional protection for areas in our UGB, but not yet within the city, we, for intermittent streams, it used to be a 15-foot buffer, we've increased that to the 60 feet, to those...
For intermittent stream?
Yes. So, we've actually increased the production in the UGB.
That's very good.
Very good.
And all of that is based on the city's LiDAR data, which is the contour data, which is very accurate, so...
Which is, that's one of the main reasons we're able to have as specific of a map as we do now. Without LiDAR, we would not be able to create the map we have, and we still have these giant 300-foot amoebas, and telling the person who wants to build their deck that, 200 feet away from the stream, that they're in a water resource overlay.
You've done an amazing job on that, and especially the natural resources overlay, the Title 13 stuff. I'm very impressed with that. I feel like our citizens should value the protection that we're giving to the natural environment.
Yeah. The geographic information system department really helped out with this.
Yeah, that's terrific. And to be approved by Metro, we know that they look through a very critical lens, so that's also a good milestone. Further comments or questions on the code amendments?
Must be your turn.
I think Commissioner Nocita has...
All right, must be his turn.
And actually, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to mention that you might want to see if there are any public comments, because we're hoping to close the public hearing today at some point, and then go into deliberations.
Okay, we're ready for that? All right, I will open the public hearing. I have no one who's signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who has come to speak on the code amendments? Well, after seven public hearings, I guess, we've answered all the questions. I will close, I will close the public hearing. Now, it's time for the commission to deliberate. Is there a, Commissioner Nocita, are you ready?
Yes, I have some proposed amendments to what is before us, and the most significant one in my mind relates to appeals and noticing. I'd like to propose two amendments to Chapter 17.50, basically 17.50.090 on public notices, and 17.50.190 on appeals.
You've provided, have you provided this to the staff, too? Do you have copies of this?
I have.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think, I don't know if these folks have, Nancy and Dan?
Well, I think that'd be pretty important.
Earlier, I had expressed my concern after Mr. Edgar's, what he confronted in his attempted appeal of the Cove project. I expressed very significant concerns about the amount that we charge for an appeal of a planning commission decision, the fairly rigorous procedural requirements an appellant confronts, and most importantly, the fact that when an initial public notice of a, public hearing on a Type III application goes out, there really isn't any information on these requirements in that notice. So, I'm not asking that the commission change the fee. All I'm asking through these amendments is that we make it clear in the initial notice that goes out to the public in a Type III land use application before the planning commission, because these are the types of appeals where we have this very high, you know, appeal fee, and we have an exception for neighborhood associations who don't have to pay the fee. But to be able to do that, there are some fairly complex procedural prerequisites that a neighborhood association has to go through. All I'm asking to do in this, these amendments, is that notice be given in the original notice, or information go out in the original notice of a, of a public hearing, what those requirements are, so that we don't have a situation, I referred in an email, as a gotcha. I want people to be able to know upfront what the requirements are in the original notice, so if they have to, if a neighborhood association is concerned to the point where they're considering appealing a project, they know right upfront, when the initial notice goes out, what they have to do to get that fee waiver.
Commissioner West? Excuse me, I thought you weren't asking for a fee waiver.
No, I'm not asking that the fee that we charge be eliminated or lowered. A Type III land, a Type III land use application, if you look at our structure of fees, is over $3,000, and not even a neighborhood association is typically going to have that kind of money. The code allows a neighborhood association, as opposed to an individual, it allows a neighborhood association to get a waiver of that $3,000 fee. But, in order to achieve that fee waiver, they have to notice a public meeting, hold their meeting, duly noticed meeting, vote at that duly noticed meeting that they're going to appeal it, and then, when they go to the public hearing, declare all that. That's complicated, and I think our neighborhood associations have the right to notice in the, you know, original notices that go out, what they have to do if they, if they're so concerned about a particular project that they, they're, you know, the association members are of a mind to appeal a project.
Commissioner West?
I would like them to know what they're supposed to do, but I don't understand why their fee should be waived.
That's not what's being asked.
It is now?
It is now.
Oh, so this is just getting information to them sooner?
Yeah, it's just that when the original, because on the Cove development, none of that information was in the original notice that went out, about what a neighborhood association had to do to appeal a project, and these requirements for voting, et cetera. And all I want is for neighborhood associations to have that information when the original notice of a public hearing goes out. It's just fairness.
As I read this, I don't see any problem with this. Basically, you're saying, making notice...
Let folks know what they need to do.
What they need to do. I don't think I have a problem. I just asked the attorney if there's anything in the wording that contradicts what the intent is.
Look, this is all pretty much a policy issue for you to decide.
Yeah.
All right, and you're not going to hear me talking about fiscal impacts, that's yours. But there's a couple of things that I would do in this, and I only got this at nine o'clock this morning, so...
Good.
If you look at page one, item six, for architecture purposes, you might want to take, from the second sentence on to the end, out, and put it in a different section that deals with appeals instead of notices. Because if you do have an issue on notice, the first sentence would take care of that. If you're looking at this process for waiver, and how the neighborhood organization does it, it's probably better off in another section of the code, and we can locate that. And I would change the second sentence, second and subsequent sentences along these following lines, and I'd certainly like to hear from everybody on it. If a Type III land use application, I would put is before the planning commission, a state...
Oh, that's my fault.
A statement that a, and I would use to modify a recognized neighborhood association, because that's what's used in the statutes, requesting an appeal fee waiver pursuant to the section. The notice shall state that the recognized neighborhood association must officially approve the request, and I take it that's the fee waiver or the appeal, through a vote of its general membership, et cetera, prior to the public hearing. Just an issue for you to consider...
I think those are great suggestions.
Okay, is whether or not you might be asking all neighborhood associations, just to cover their basis, to do the appeal before the hearing. You may want to have a period after that, sort of a free zone, in which the neighborhood association could decide formally whether to take the appeal. I understand Commissioner Nocita's concern, and particularly with regard to Mr. Edgar's situation. But the opposite of that situation might have all neighborhood associations approve in advance appeals, without knowing what the standards, you know, what they're going to appeal beforehand. You may want to look at that, and that's a suggestion.
Okay.
If I could add one thing to that, though?
Yes.
And again, I think you have to change your terminology, is, you're not talking about a fee waiver, it is a city paying the fee. I think you need to make that wording clearer. As long as you talk about fee waivers, just like, the fee doesn't go to anybody.
Yeah, so the city suing itself, or appealing itself.
So, it is, currently, it is that way, though, so it's no change.
If they go through the recognized neighborhood association meeting duly called, yes.
Oh.
They get the waiver.
That's incorrect.
So, that's nothing...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The city pays the fee.
There's a cost to the service, and it has to be paid by some...
Okay.
Yes.
The other thing I would make, if I may, in that last sentence, again, I'd question whether this association must declare it during the public hearing. You may want to have the association within X days of the hearing, holding the vote. You might have a sort of a pre-hearing statement that we may take it up, and then give them an extra period of time to decide whether to take it up. Okay? On the second page, the item on number five, of course, that's the only thing that is changed, it says, "No appeal shall be required." You don't want to say that. You may want to say...
Oh, I'm sorry, that, again, my...
That's okay.
I'm ADD, I guess, because that should be, "No, no appeal fee shall be required."
Okay, and that's fine, because what I would not want to do is to give one party a leg up on this, so that they don't have to make any statement of appeal grounds. We've been very good about that over the last few years, about requiring people to state before the hearing what their appeal grounds were. Those are my comments, they're technical comments, the policy issue's yours.
Okay, Commissioner Neely?
Well, first of all, Jim, I'm glad you've done this, and I've got a question that may be resolved elsewhere, because these fees are waived.
Whatever, whatever.
The point is, they don't, they're no fee is charged, and therefore, I regard the fee as being waived. I understand the implications of what you're saying, but we're not requiring, we're not requiring to pay the fee, and usually, we call that a waiver. Anyway, the, what I was going to ask is, if the neighborhood bylaws permit a, if we got some kind of a deadline, okay, in which you can make the decision, if the neighborhood bylaws permit the steering committee to put forward the request, or permit a land use committee in the neighborhood association for putting the request, that's something that the bylaws, in fact, can deal with.
You could do that. We obviously have not seen that in Commissioner Nocita's...
No, I understand.
And I'd need to think about how to deal with that.
I don't want to hold this thing up because of this. I think, I think what the wording we're dealing with here is fine, but it's something that we might, might want to take a look at, because depending on what we set that date to be, neighborhood associations frequently will have a meeting, maybe even quarterly, and may have a steering committee and so forth, and may not have the mechanism put together where they could meet the time requirement, but if they had a, a committee that that was delegated to by the neighborhood association, whether that could be done.
I can certainly put something together, I can't do it tonight.
No, I understand.
Could I say, you know, we're coming back in six months with some more work?
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to hash this out. No, I don't need to hold this up, but something, something that we need to think about.
Well, I would like this amendment to be in the current...
Oh, no, 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 I understand that. I'm talking about the things I'm talking about.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't want to, I don't want to mess further with what you've written.
Sure.
I think this is a good idea, but I think, I think having a fixed period in which it could be done may be challenging a certain neighborhood associations, and the reading mechanisms, that they can deal with those legitimately in their bylaws.
Yeah, remind me of the rules of ordinances, because I'm not comfortable with not seeing the approval wording.
I gotta read any change in full.
Yeah, so, next time?
This time, if you're gonna do first reading tonight, I need to have it down in writing.
How does something happen at the next meeting?
You could continue the first reading to your next meeting, if you wish to do that.
Okay.
And I can write it, and I can have it done, so that it's part of the notice and available to the public.
Now, to me, that would make me more comfortable to see exactly what we're gonna have, let staff have a chance to chew on it a little bit, too, since you haven't seen it either. This is your first...
And I was going to say, you know, we're a pretty easy group to get along with, so if someone has a question about process, you can always give us a call.
Yeah, I'm sorry you didn't send that to the planning commission, or to the planning director.
I did. In the email, you can see that it's CC'd to Dan Grantlaw.
But I guess my point is, is that we're really open, and we work with neighborhood groups, happy to work with them, so...
Sure, that's, and I know Mr. Edgar is one of our more...
Challenging.
Challenging.
I didn't say it.
Active citizens. The way he conveyed his experience with Mr. Conkle, even granted Mr. Edgar's personality, it did seem to me to be something that advanced notice would have made smoother, both for Mr. Edgar and for Mr. Conkle. So, all this is asking is that notice be given to citizens at the, you know, at the outset of the process.
If you continue this for first reading, I will draft something and have it out by next Monday for everybody to read, and then we'll have it as part of the notice for the next meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Okay, we've got a consensus on that. Okay, let's, are there any more changes or questions about these public notices and appeals? Okay, then let's finish up the other changes that you want to put...
That's it.
You're finished, okay? You weren't going to talk about those other, I guess you did, I guess you did.
Do you need a moment?
I had some more in the email, and some other issues that I wanted to raise.
Okay, your turn.
The planning department is proposing extending the expiration time for land use approval from one to two years. I'm not sure I agree with that, I think that's a very, very long time, and there's already the ability for an extension, like Mr. Grantlaw, to, you know, maybe give us some more thoughts on that, but I just think that's a really long time. I don't know if we can make a distinction between privately owned property and the property that the city owns, but I would hate to see land tied up that we own for two years, without us being able to take a new direction if we want to.
This, actually, I think the Oregon League of Cities actually suggested this to a lot of cities, because of the way the economy is. We get, we get a lot of subdivisions, for example, that may get approved, but the time it takes for them, once the approval occurs, to get their financing, to do all their engineering, to get the plat recorded, sometimes that takes more than a year. In fact, it's fairly common right now. And so, this would, and a lot of cities have actually increased this number to two, and some cities have increased it to three years, actually. So, we felt that this was a pretty, pretty reasonable thing to do, given, especially given the state of the economy.
I'd have to say I agree with that. I, and I don't know, I mean, if we have a developer that's putting something forward on city property that the commission has approved... on city property that the commission has approved, I don't think that should have a, that should be any different, because it is challenging, as you say, particularly in this particular time. I don't have a problem with it.
And I think we can look at the league website, too, and maybe get some advantage of their thinking as well.
Okay.
Next one.
Last is, I very, I have a significant difficulty with rezoning the two houses on Tumwater, to, I guess it's institutional. Just giving, again, as a notice question, the lack of information the public was provided when these houses were purchased, and the purpose for which they were purchased was never stated in the urban renewal process or the urban renewal agency hearings on that amendment to the, the plan. And, I mean, it's no secret that I'm not a particular fan of the proposed Skyway project, particularly in its current configuration that will cut into my neighborhood at the top of the parking lot at the BFW Hall. And, you know, the Willamette Falls Access Project within the urban renewal plan is amorphous. There's no detail to it. It's not funded. And, you know, at the time, this project, the Willamette Falls Access Project, does reach a certain level, level of detail and critical mass. I mean, we'd certainly consider a zone change at that point. But just given what occurred with those houses when they were purchased, I'm, I'm just not in favor of, of changing their zoning at this point.
If I might, I don't have a problem with not changing the zoning, for the simple reason that the city owns it, that the, the city would be requesting the zone change, and the city could evaluate it. So I don't, I don't have a problem with not making the zone changes currently recommended.
I don't either, but is there a staff response?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the staff response, or how this came to be.
I mean, it's typical, on a city-owned property to zone it institutional. This whole question about the project is, I'm not, I think that should be discussed by you and Mr. Patterson, but we...
That's never been...
I should indicate, too, that when that issue did come before the Urban New York Commission, it was explained what the purchase of those houses were for. I think the Urban New York Commission would definitely, I mean, when you think about trying to buy those two houses, if that question would not have come up, I mean, that's pretty a stretch of the truth on this issue.
The only other thing, and I don't have a policy dog in this fight, is that if you were to defer it, you'd have to go through a quasi judicial zone change, and it would be more expensive. But that's...
And what would be the harm of having them zoned institutional? I mean, the...
None, because...
Because the access project isn't even, isn't even having anything right now.
And their conditional use, they would be...
Yeah, we never rezone property based on the precise use somebody has. In other words, it's up to the landowner, in this case it's you, to decide what you do with the property.
But you're still subject to the zoning regulations in effect.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Neely.
Could you tell me, Mr. Sullivan, what the expense is for the quasi judicial...
What do you charge for a zone change fee?
It's about thirty-six...
Thirty-five.
Oh, so about, about five thousand altogether?
Wait.
Five, six thousand.
But we'd be paying for that to ourselves.
That would not be a waiver.
That's what I was gonna say. That's what I was gonna say, too. Yay, Dan! Yeah, we could waive it to ourselves.
Commissioner Smith.
This may be a naive question, but by changing the zoning, does that, does that not then allow us to continue to rent them as residences?
Not conforming use.
But if we wanted to sell them...
So we can still rent those properties out until there's a use for it.
Right. But we couldn't sell them as private residents.
You could sell them if the use continued. It could be a nonconforming use.
To a private residence.
Yes.
Well, then, yeah, there's, what's the point?
Then there's no change.
But there's probably no reason to change.
No.
All right. That's all I have.
I just want to comment on the rationale, though. We have actually procured property, the Urban Renewal Agency, excuse me, has, has actually procured property intended for public use, like potential parking lots and so forth. We never gave a special zoning to it, and in fact, not, we didn't necessarily follow through on that. So, you know, the fact that we looked at it for a certain purpose at the beginning, I don't think necessarily has to reflect our zoning pattern, but, yeah, since, since we can sell, if, just to make sure, if they, if somebody bought it and then wanted to tear down their house and build a new one, then that would not, then...
That'd be an issue.
That would be an issue, but the current, the current structure, even if we sold the property, could go ahead and it's current use.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there further discussion on details?
Let me make sure, because I don't want anybody to say I'm running off and doing this on my own.
No.
There are three issues. The first is the appeals process. You've asked me to prepare something to revise the appeals process for neighborhood associations. You've declined to do the change of the extension. You want to leave what's before you now, and you are not rezoning the houses on Tumwater at this time. Is that right?
No, we are.
You are rezoning, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Saving $6,000.
Okay. We'll bring it back to you.
Okay, great. So this evening, we'll have...
Wait, I want to make...
Yes, Commissioner Neely.
You're talking about the rezoning. You, you mean, you're accepting what is in the current...
Correct.
Oh, we're not changing...
That's correct.
Yeah, so, okay, I want to make sure. In other words, we're not changing.
We lawyers love to talk in double...
No, we are changing the zoning from...
As requested by staff.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, well.
It's in the materials we have, that we are considering.
Yeah, in the materials we've got, we're not changing the materials we've got, the firsts.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
The only change in the materials we have is what Mr. Sullivan just said about notice and appeal.
Yes, okay, very good.
With that, Mayor, I have a motion for first reading.
To continue first reading to our next meeting.
I move to continue first reading till...
The next regular meeting.
Which is the question, mean?
No, yeah, that's right, seventeenth of June.
June 17th.
Moved by Commissioner Neely.
Of this year.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith to continue this first reading to June 17th. Nancy?
Two thousand nine.
Yeah, two thousand nine.
She whiz.
Is there further comment on that? Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris? Aye. Motion passes five zero. All right, next we have, and under general business, the agreement between the new Clackamas County Library District and the member cities. So this is a cooperative IGA. Mr. Patterson?
I'll give that to Artwell first.
Oh, is it Mr. Archer? Let's let you do that.
I'll do that, thank you. Mayor Norris and commissioners, you have to take off your planning hats now and put on your library hats. As you, as you know, the voters of Clackamas County overwhelmingly supported the formation of, of the new library district this last November, and with that passage of the district, there is some, there are some necessary formalities, and this is, this is the first major step in that, in that regard, this intergovernmental agreement between all of the member cities, which is basically this, this is the form, this IGA is the formation of the district. The, the IGA has been negotiated between, as I said, between all the members of the cit, all the member cities of the district, and it is necessary for a number of reasons. We, we did go over this in, in detail at a study session not that long ago. I will spare you the, the great detail, but I'll just, for yourselves and for some of our viewing audience, I'll just give the very broad, broad brush of what the big points are, and then if you have specific questions that you want me to cover again, I'd be happy to do that. Basically, there are, as I see it, there are four major components that, that we want to be aware of, and those are as follows. One is that we are agreeing to work in a cooperative manner with all of the members of the newly formed district, and also this defines all of the specific terms of the agreement with the member cities. Two, this defines district governance and operations. Three, this defines how the funds will be distributed and, and how they're to be expended by the cities. And four, this defines the district service area boundaries for each of the member libraries. The, the district has a permanent tax rate of, of 39.74 cents per thousand. The distribution of the funds to the member cities is based on a formula and service areas. We, it's, it's, there are two parts to that. One is the city's assessed value. We basically receive all of the funding back equal to our assessed value within our city boundaries, and so in essence, all of the city's AV portion of the district funds are returned to us. And then, secondly, our unincorporated population component, which we have the largest, we have the largest unincorporated population in our service district in the county district. Where our city population is, is a little over 30,000, and our district, or, excuse me, our boundaries of our service population are just under 58,000. So we're, we're, I think it's something like 55% city residents and 45% out of city that are in our service area. The unincorporated population component funding is, is, the, the distribution is based on, basically, it's put in a, in a pool for all of the unincorporated residents throughout this district, and it's distributed on a population basis, so we receive back relevant to, to our population. Commissioner?
I wanted to ask on that particular point, I'm going back to your attachment A where it's under 2B, and I'm a little bit confused, but it doesn't, does it boil back, does it boil down to, okay, we've got, we've got properties that exist in the unincorporated area of our district, does it boil down to the, the taxes that are, are levied there come back to us? Is that true, or is that not true?
Mostly true, yeah. It's, it's, it's a little bit, it's not quite as straightforward as in, in the city boundary, we get basically the direct assessed value back.
Right.
It, it, the unincorporated area in, in our service district goes into a general pool for the, for the entire district, and then by population percentage, it's given back. So it may not be the exact assessed value in our service boundary, but it's, it's, it's relevant directly to our unincorporated population. I don't know if that makes sense or not, Commissioner, but that's...
A person, a person, a person, for example, owns 100,000 acres of forest land for which he's paying a certain level of tax, and maybe, maybe not example, since he's, he's, he's in an unpopulated area, most of his money's going into somebody else.
No, it's going into a pool, right?
It's going to a pool, but it's being distributed according to the population.
But then, but then there's got Stafford, or let's say that's got a higher property than...
That's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, that, I think that's a, that's an interesting scenario within this, but I think you're correct, Commissioner, that's, that's a, but, but for the most part, I think the population thing will kind of average out over, over the, you know, it's, it's a little bit, there might be a few scenarios like that, but it's, it is, it is population, it's not direct assessed value.
It's not the assessed value that the taxpayer's paying, that, that money may go to somebody else, or better, or, or may, may come...
It's drawn and distributed.
Yeah, okay.
One thing, though, I'd, I'd add to that point is that, to remember, this is a, this is a library district countywide. Those, those, everybody that's in the, the boundaries of any of the service areas within the library district can go to any member library and have all of the same services and privileges and so forth, so in, in essence, it's, it's a cooperative thing, which is basically a lot of what the point of this, this IGA are, so.
Right. I understand.
Once again, you'll have an advisory committee to the county commission.
Just a, just a couple more points.
The, again, with the, the distribution of the funding, I'd point out that Oregon City's estimated first-year revenue is, which begins this coming fiscal year, pending adoption, adoption of our city budget, which includes this new library fund, is expected to be about $1.6 million. This is close to two and a half times what our current library budget is, so obviously we will significantly enhance our service level, our hours, we've already planned, as you, as you well know, we've discussed a number of times, our, our hours will go up, our, our days of operation, our, our services, our, our materials, et cetera, and all of the funds for the library, all of the funds that are distributed must be used solely for library purposes. Additionally, I'll mention, as you know, we have, as part of this district commitment, one of the things that we needed to do was hire a full-time professional librarian as our library director. We've just completed that task this week, and I think you've received some information about that.
Are you ready to announce?
I will leave that to Mr. Patterson, if he wants to do so. I didn't mean to...
It seems appropriate that you should, if you're ready.
I can do that, yeah.
Scott should.
No, I think he's deferring to our...
No, I, no, I just wanted to see if he had anything else before we got...
Uh, yeah, just, just a couple more things, if you want me to finish up.
Don't we want to take some action here?
Yeah, we want to know about the library director.
Before we, I guess before we talk about that, just one more point, and then essentially open to questions, and are, obviously, my recommendation is for your approval of this, of this intergovernmental agreement. We do retain, it's important to note also, the city does retain local control of our library services and operations while working with our district partners, and also, one more component is the, the capital piece. There's a distribution from the county that will be provided to each of the member cities. That's being negotiated separately under a, a capital agreement. We'll be coming back to you at a future date with some information and some negotiated terms regarding that. And so with that, I'll, I'll be open for questions, and my recommendation, again, is, is to have you approve this, and when, if you approve this, it, it is still subject to the approval of all of the rest of the, the member libraries, so there, there are actually our 13 signature cities, 13 city signature lines on this agreement you'll note, so.
I'd just like to comment that I think this is one of the most important things, issues that the county has passed. It's made a huge difference to Oregon City, and I used to practically get angry when I would speak to citizens and have to say that our library was open 20 hours and had the largest circulation in the county. It was open the fewest hours of any city library in the county, and look how far we've gotten, so we're going from 20 hours, wasn't that the lowest?
We were.
20 hours, now we're going up to 50, an increase of 30 hours, which would not have been possible without this county library district. So thank you to all of you who are library supporters and all the citizens that supported it, because it passed in Oregon City overwhelmingly as well.
Before the action was taken to reduce it to 20 hours, I would point out that, in my time on the commission, it was a 60-hour library.
Yeah, it's quite a change. You've been on a long time, haven't you? Thank you, questions?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see the section here where it says that the county will dedicate one acre of the red soils property to, and turn it over to the city for the building of a new library.
It says right here, a separate capital funding IGA is being negotiated.
That's not what I asked, I was talking about the free, I'm talking about the free property.
Okay, questions that are sincere questions about the...
Well, that's, that's a serious issue, and I, I didn't want to get this any less important than, than the sewer system.
You're right, it is a serious issue.
Oh, goodness, okay.
Okay. May I have a motion then on this? Please.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner West?
I recommend approval of the cooperative, or the IGA between the library district of Clackamas County and Oregon City.
You mean you move approval?
I move approval.
Second. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment? Actually, I do have one. Sorry.
Uh-oh.
William, would you please come to the microphone?
Madam Mayor, city commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City, and I'm not making a light comment about this, and I want to build on Commissioner Neely's comment that this agreement is every bit as important as the sewer issue, and I am requesting that you do not direct a presentation to be given to the CIC before you make a decision on this, and I hope that you understand the parallel that I'm trying to draw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there further comment? Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now let's hear about the library director.
Yes, I'm happy to announce that we have off, made an offer to an individual for the library director's position and she has accepted that. Before I get to that person, I think all of you are aware of this, we did have a number of candidates that were in town, I think it was, was it last week? Week before last. And of which, we did come down to two very excellent finalists. And after discussing with those folks, we have offered the position to Maureen Cole. She is with the Eugene Public Library. She also has been president of the OLA. And Ms. Cole has accepted that position. She is unavailable to start until September the 1st, but she will attend the library board meetings in July and August and will come down anytime that we need her and, and she can make that during these months. Mr. Archer is in communication with her as we will begin to work on that transition. And I have also had several conversations with her already. I can tell you she's very excited to start and indicates that it's sometimes hard to stay focused on the work she's doing in Eugene, except when they come and kind of redirect her attentions at that moment. But she is looking very much forward to coming to Oregon City.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
That's quite a compliment considering what a beautiful library Eugene has.
Uh, we did talk about buildings.
Brand new one. Well, she has ideas for our new one then.
Awesome.
Yes, she does.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Neely?
Yes, I did have the opportunity to talk to all of the candidates at this, I think you should call it an open house or whatever it is. And I talked to several of the people that, several of the citizens that were there too, to find out what, what they thought. To every person that I talked to, and it includes my own opinion, that, and there was, there were good candidates there, that everybody mentioned this particular person. I think, I'm really pleased that, first of all, you, you, you put out the invitation or the offer to her and that she accepted. I think, I think tremendous potential for our library because of this.
It's a new era.
Now we can make Scott work harder on other things.
Exactly. Thank you. Other comments? All right, let's move on then. Next, we have two pieces of business, the first being a conditional award of construction contract, the next is a conditional authorization to approve an easement, and this is for the Pease Road Sewer Pump Station Replacement Project. And Nancy Crashour is the staff person on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Several years ago, we started the capital improvement planning and preliminary engineering for the Pease Road Pump Station Replacement. The pump station itself is a little over 13 years old and at the time, it was constructed as a temporary pump station. Our 2003 wastewater master plan indicated that it needed further evaluation to determine the best location for it and what sort of upgrades would be needed to meet the needs of the sewage drainage basin. So it indeed was determined to be undersized, which our crews already knew from operating during the winter months. And we also were able to do a very thorough review of the gravity flows and identifying the boundaries of this basin. So we've gone through final design, we've solicited bids through the public contracting rules, and Landis and Landis Incorporated has been determined to be the lowest qualified bidder. We recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute this construction contract and make that conditional upon the execution of the right of way, a right of entry and public utility easement agreements that you will find the next agenda item in your packet. We're not anticipating, it's, there's just been a delay based on some wanting to understand the final conditions of approval for the rest of the subdivision by the developer. And we've talked to the contractor, there's a fair amount of information here about the contract itself and when we need to award the contract. And the contractor has agreed to extend the date of the contract. He's very excited about working with us on this project. So we anticipate we'd be able to come back to your first meeting in July and just give you an update on the outcome of the conditional award.
Is there questions about either the conditions or the contract itself? Commissioner Neely?
Uh, it's more of a question of the experience that we've had with Landis and Landis.
Their, our experience with them has been very good.
May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to authorize city manager to execute a contract for the construction of the Pease Road Sewer Pump Station Replacement Project to Landis and Landis Construction in the amount of 662,350 dollars.
Uh, I think you might need to say the second thing.
Up on execution of the right of entry and public utility easement agreements with the property owner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there further question or comments? Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And the next one, Nancy.
Thank you, and this is the authorization to execute the easement for the right of entry permit and then an actual sanitary sewer easement where the, where the new pump station will be constructed. And again, the property owner is just awaiting some final understanding of the conditions of approval for the entire subdivision. And we would ask that you go ahead and approve the easement and, and certainly if anything changes, we would come back to you with an update. But it's important that these two things move together, together, move together, together.
And this will cost the sanitary fund $1?
Yeah, yes, that's right. We've, the, the, this particular development will be sending their wastewater to this pump station, so if, and, and since the Pease Road Pump Station is at capacity, we cannot take any more flows at the Pease Road Pump Station. So in order for this development to be successful, it needs to have this pump station constructed. So the developer was very cooperative in providing this parcel to us for the pump station.
May I have a motion, please?
I move to-
Commissioner Neely?
The Pease Road Own Station Easement Attachment, no, Easement located between 19330 and 19370 Pease Road. Can I do, skip the parentheses?
Yes.
Okay. And authorize the mayor and the city recorded to execute the easement at such time as the easement is similarly executed by the easement grantee, the owner of the Pavilion Park property. Is there anything you care for me to add?
Good job, good job. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further comment, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Just a question, if I may.
Yes.
I presume the cost of easement of $1, we are required to buy it?
You have to have some consideration.
Some consideration, okay.
Okay, great. On our mind lately has been the Willamette River Bridge. And this is yet another agreement with ODOT, the approval of a maintenance agreement for the lighting. And Nancy Crashour?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have an existing agreement with ODOT to pay for the power costs of lighting on the Oregon State Highway 43 Willamette River Bridge, which is now more commonly known as the Arch Bridge. The, ODOT has requested that we update that agreement with the one that's before you tonight. And it, the obligations are essentially the same as the previous, and that is that the power for the new lights, they'll construct the new lights, they'll put all the electrical work out there, but then once they're turned on, the meter will be read by PGE, that bill will be sent to the City of Oregon City, then we will take half of that bill and invoice it to the City of Westland and we'll take care of the power costs between the two cities. And so we're asking that you approve this intergovernmental agreement that formalizes that fairly simple obligation.
Okay. Commissioner West?
When I was reading this, I couldn't decide, this isn't during construction, this is period. This is after the final, the lights are turned on. Okay. You want a motion?
Yeah, actually, I guess what I, what went through my thought after going to two public hearings on this was that maybe we could withhold this and get more sidewalks done or something. Does that relate?
I think that we could get as much benefit of just cooperating and signing it on their schedule.
I think we might have a dark bridge.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's what I figured too. Commissioner West?
Well, I move approval of the maintenance agreement number 25177 with ODOT and the City of Westland for illumination, maintenance costs on the reconstruction constructed Oregon 43 Willamette River Bridge.
Thank you. Motion, uh, second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there a comment on this?
I just wanted to add, excuse me, I wanted to add that the absolute final, final version of this has not come back from ODOT yet, but they've been waiting on us bringing it to the commission and the City of Westland had a few minor changes, our city attorney had a few minor changes, and anything substantial, we would of course bring back to you. But I, I don't think that any changes would be of significance for you to approve it tonight. And if they were, we'd bring it back.
With that knowledge, then Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next is a one that was added to the agenda. This is a contract with Claquemus County Social Services.
Yes.
Community on, the Council on Aging.
Yes, and this comes up every year for renewal, and this has to do with some of our Pioneer Center operations. And if you look at the contract, basically what it is, it's a, a service that you'll see in section one there, it kind of outlines the services. There's the geriatric assessment, there is some case monitoring, there's information and assistance to seniors, there's transportation, there's mill site management, there's exercise and fitness and wellness education. Kind of breaks down as follows in terms of the cost of those, looking at our program, and you wouldn't find this in the budget because all part of the Pioneer Center operations. There's client services costs that cost our $67,438. There's nutritional services and those costs are $25,871. And there's transportation services and those costs are $2,082. Basically, this contract is and provides funding for those from the Social Services Division in the amount of $86,348, of which those costs I just listed totaled $95,391. So the city's share in that is $9,043. So it's really, it's, uh, we've got to sign the contract to get the money for those, to provide those services.
All right, may I have a motion, please? Commissioner West?
I just have a question.
Great, go ahead.
As if I should know this by now, this is the third year we've done this. Who provides the services, the senior center staff or the county?
Senior, this is, we do.
We do?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I move approval of the contractor, contract for services between Claquemus County Social Services Division, the Area Agency on Aging, and the City of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there further discussion? Please take the vote, Nancy.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. The last item on our business agenda is the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Please poll us on the consent agenda.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Moving through this quickly because we're all excited about going into an executive session pretty soon.
Well, perhaps, but we have communications first. So Larry?
I have two items. First of all, I need to let everyone know that the pedestrian bridge between Gladstone and Oregon City will be closed, uh, oh, again, didn't get the date on that. It's Wednesday through Friday and it's going to be from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I can't remember, I didn't write down the date now. But that is so they can install the art. That is part of that, and I'll get that date and I will email that to you.
It's looking interesting.
The next item is, yeah, this is a little tougher. And I will try to present this without the anger I'm feeling on this right now. But I do think that we probably need to have at an upcoming work session, an item dealing, perhaps I'll term it with decorum. I understand that there's a lot of work the city's doing and I understand we've done a lot of work that perhaps not all members of the commission understand. But I don't think in my 34 years in this business, I have been accused with the inference of wrongdoing, secrecy, conspiracy, illegal action, I have in the last several months. And are even the discussion this evening that brings the staff members name up in a discussion about between a citizen and them. And I'm not saying, you know, there's not room for discussion, I just think that we need to talk about how we present these items from the commission bench and any writing going back and forth, because I think all that stuff, first of all, undermines the credibility of the city. I think it undermines credibility of each of you and frankly, it is wrong. And it is a misunderstanding or at least just being poorly informed. I think we can communicate better, I think we can work better together, I don't think that helps matters any. And frankly, I guess I'm kind of fed up with that. I think it's time we look at doing business different. I haven't seen it in Oregon City in a long, long time that we've had that type of discussion coming from the commission bench that is coming now. And I, I just think it's totally out of order.
Thank you. Would you set that on a work session agenda then? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have reports from your liaison committees? Commissioner Smith?
Oh, I thought you were going to do that.
Well, I thought we were going to do it under, under you, but I-
Let's pretend it is.
Yeah.
We're still under the manager's report. Commissioner Smith, do you have augmentation?
This is an update on, on the interviews for the CHP consultant. About a month ago, the Oregon City Commission directed city staff to issue an RFP in the hopes to find a consultant firm focusing in evaluating nonprofits to do an assessment of the management of the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center and the Stephen Crawford Museum and the Museum of the Oregon Territory under a CHP. There was two, there was two proposals submitted to the city. The first proposal submitted by Jeff Gilfoi and Nanita Nicholhatten, I hope I pronounced her name correctly. And the second by Joe Hertzberg, decisions, decisions. An interview committee was formed. I served on that along with Scott Archer from Community Service and Services and Terry Bankhead from the city manager's office. We had our first interview on the 27th of May with Nanita and on June 1st with Joe. Both proposals were looked at in depth and the interviews both went extremely well. We all felt very confident that, that the representatives of AKT, AKT, excuse me, with Nanita had a broad range, a much more, much more in-depth answers to, I think, some of our questions, a brighter, a broader range of experience in nonprofits and their communications with city agencies and felt that they were much more confident in tackling issues relating to capital projects and, and financial assessments. It seemed that by far, they were the best choice. We all agreed unanimously to recommend that firm to bring to you tonight to this, to the rest of the city commission. So we all recommend AKT for the work in consulting for the city for CHP. And so we bring that to you tonight. I think we're prepared to answer questions if you have them. And then we'll just leave that for discussion and direction from the commission. that for discussion and direction from the commission.
When can she go to work?
I think tomorrow. I mean, it was June 1st, but, June 1st, but-
Good. Commissioner Neely?
Since these were our, our funds and we specified how they were to be used, I do want to ask how the reporting back to the commission would occur.
It's, I, off the top of my head, I, I don't think I can answer that it was specified in, in, in their proposal, which I don't know that I have right here with me. Do you know the answer?
Well, I think also, yeah, they had some, there was some discussion about that in their proposal also. To address your question there, Commissioner, I, we haven't, the, the contract hasn't been finalized yet with the consultant, based, based on commission direction, things like that. This is obviously based on some previous commission direction, so if, if the commission want to, would like to see specific things such as that clearly specified in the contract, we can, we can make sure those are in there.
Of course, this is going to be of benefit to the Clackamas Heritage Partners, but the fact of the matter is that we're the ones that put forward the funds, we're the ones really that are effectively hiring the consultant. I, I think, I, I think we have to have a mechanism, not only of reporting, but of interacting, and should at one point in the, I mean, we may be making, the city itself may be making decisions based upon what this report is, and so I, I don't have a specific suggestion as to how this would occur, but I, I would assume that this will occur in stages so that we're simply not responding to a draft of the final report.
Correct.
And so-
There's some very, in, in the proposals and in our, in our good conversation with, with this consultant, there are some very specific points of, of communication with all the interested parties and especially the commission, and we, Commissioner Smith, we had some conversations with, with each of the consultants during the interview process. We made it very clear that this is a, this is a city project, not a Clackamas Heritage Partners project, although there will be involvement there, obviously, and they may in fact benefit from, from the outcome of this project, but the city is paying for this, for this product, and they, they are very aware of that, that communication needs to come back to, to you, the commission, as the, as the report is developed.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I don't recall what's, what's the RFP recall, but I would suggest to you that you at least, as a minimum, want some type of midterm report, and then you probably want to see a draft report before that's finished, and then after any commentary, they could put the report and finish for them, and you can get that report at that point. I think as a minimum, maybe with those three reporting.
I want to make sure that someone is designated to talk to CHP before the consultant does. Is there someone that's designated to do that from our staff?
We will, we will.
Make sure that happens, yeah, good. Commissioner West, uh, Neely?
This is not, this is not a recommendation, but it is something I want to throw out. We, the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center is actually under the Parks Department, and I'm just wondering, and I'm just wondering if there's any benefit for the, our Parks Recreation Advisory Committee to become involved. They generally haven't been involved in those things, but I, and maybe, maybe they're the ones to make the decision, so I would simply recommend perhaps Scott to bring this forward and ask them if they, if they want to in fact become involved in this process, if, if they're not already.
I don't think the PrAC is aware of that at this point. I'll certainly, we may, we'll meet again with them until the end of June, but can, can give them a heads up and, and certainly, you know, let them know that, again, the consultant will be, big, big component of this is, is meeting with stakeholders.
Sure.
Including yourselves, but also maybe, and obviously, CHP and, and other, other groups such as possibly PrAC.
I think it's their decision whether they want to be a stakeholder in that sense as an, as an entity, so I'm not suggesting that we, we send it to them, but I think request, request other than whether they want to-
I'll run that past him.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to say that I was not in favor of the idea of hiring a consultant, but I, I was, I was pleased to be able to be on this committee, and I, I feel very strongly that the process, I feel very happy about the process, and I feel very happy about seeing this process move forward, and I think it will be a, a great benefit to the city to, to find out whatever the findings are, and, and I think the direction that we take hopefully will lead to a long-term, stable organization that will allow us to keep our museums open, and so I just wanted to let everyone know, I do feel very confident that this process was, was well done, and I really enjoyed working with Scott and Terry, and I think we made a good decision.
Right. Thank you for serving, appreciate you doing that, appreciate your report. Other comments?
I would just, I'd just add to Commissioner Smith's comments that Ms. Bankhead out of Larry's office did a lot of the groundwork and the legwork and the, a lot of credit to her for putting the process in, in place and making it so organized, so I want to make sure she gets that credit too.
Good. Commissioner Neely?
Not, not on this.
Oh, you want to keep, oh, Rocky, you finished?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Unless I, I'll have a report, well, not a real report, but-
Go ahead.
Well, it's-
Since you're on there, no, 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 I know.
I just wanted to remind everybody.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm actually starting to feel better. I could probably stay for another hour.
Oh, no, no.
No.
Out of order.
What was that look? Clara's declaring at me. I just wanted to remind everyone, I believe our next city commission meeting, I will be in San Diego representing the city on South Fork, for the South Fork Water Board, so I will be missing the next meeting.
Okay. Go learn about cryptosporidium and all those other things.
What?
Yeah, you'll, you'll know, you'll know. Okay, next report, Commissioner Neely?
Uh, loving you said, because there could have been a problem here if we didn't have a quorum. We are having the budget the next meeting. I have, I have backed out of a, an appearance as John McGawkin, because our, but we've got to cover the, the budget on the next meeting, we don't have a choice, and, and I feel that, that's an important thing, and that, that has nothing to do with you. But I, if we're, for that to be a concern, because I had indicated I wouldn't be coming to that meeting, I will be coming to that meeting, it's nothing to do with you.
Well, no, I just, but I don't know if it was, if everyone remembered that that, I had that commitment either, so I'm glad.
So, so Neely comes before John McGawkin?
Uh, no, the City of Oregon City.
Ah.
And, and John would probably approve.
That's the right decision.
Having been the former mayor himself of Oregon City.
Do you have a report?
I do.
Okay.
We've got, we've had, had the, the Policy Advisor Committee on Urban Rural Reserves to the County Commission met. We're going through the process of looking at recommendations regarding rural reserves, not urban reserves at this point in the game. I, I forget the number, but we, we have them parceled into different sections, and there are several of them. We were supposed to get through, through them in, in two meetings, in order to do so, we'd have to cover each of those sections in 15 minutes. Well, it took us an hour and a half to get through three sections, and what'll undoubtedly be occurring is we'll have additional meetings that we'll be going to. In fairness, part of that was actually getting the process started to make the evaluation. I presume some of these other sections are going to go a little bit more smoothly. The sections that we have talked about so far, there have been three of them, one of them is an area next to Sycade, and the other two are areas around Canby. Neither one of them had, were, neither, neither of those, none of those three, I should say, were ones that we had discussed in our joint planning session, those will be coming up. Even the pro, I wanted to discuss one example in the process, though, one of the sections that was looked at is, is a section that's adjacent to Canby. This is foundation agricultural land directly east of Canby. In the process, the majority of the people felt that that should be a rural reserve. Now, Canby has really no expansion room. That doesn't mean that won't occur in our subsequent recommendation on urban reserves, but what we're evaluating is the quality of the land to qualify as a rural reserve. Now, it may be in, when we come to the next portion, and we're not there yet, when we're looking at recommendations to the County Commission on urban reserves, there may be some pushback that occurs in that particular process. So that's where we are on the process. Now, that brings me to a, a situation. We are scheduling extra meetings in any case. The next one is actually the coming Tuesday, now that's our study session. I am going to go to the PAC. I, I did actually request a specific item to be on that study session, and I would request either to, to, if we could find a way to do it, to reschedule the study, study session, or to remove that item that I requested to a subsequent study session.
Okay. Uh, is there any political will to move?
Well, I think it'd be difficult. Frankly, everybody's got high, you know, and I mean, I've got other commitments, and everybody has different commitments in terms of meetings and so forth.
What about you, move your item?
My, my request, request had to do with conservation, conservation issues on water and sewer use and so forth, and if that could simply be postponed to the next study session.
Move that to July.
What time is the study session?
5:30.
5:30.
Yeah, just usual.
And I think we do have that on the agenda, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Commissioner Nocita, yeah, report?
One brief report. I attended a reception organized by the Chamber of Commerce down at the Blue Heron Mill a week and a half ago, and was honored to receive one of the Pioneer Awards on behalf of the city. In my haste to get up here, I actually left it at home, but I just wanted folks to know that the Chamber of Commerce did recognize us as one of the businesses that had been in Oregon City for at least 100 years, 20 years or more? Okay, well, I think, I think, I think we-
It's actually 165.
So. Chamber members.
Because the city is a chamber member.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioner West, do you have something?
Yes.
A few things?
Yeah, well, just two things. The last week, I've had two different opportunities to work with consultants and groups just looking at Oregon City through different eyes than our own. They're all out-of-town people in, in a different way. So the first thing I would like to talk about was the three-day visit we had from the Lakota Group on our Main Street Committee, and similar to what Rocky was saying with CHP, they visited with various stakeholders, downtown business owners, property owners, the city council, Main Street Board, and any folks that would be interested, and they were trying to give us a, a comparison could be called, that they were giving us an operational audit to see if our Main Street program is on the right track and how we could get it better aligned if it isn't. And it was interesting, as some of you commissioners were at the wrap-up last week, that, I'm just going to hit three highlights, because it was so interesting that that group, and then the next group I'm going to talk about, three things that were, they both had in common stuck out, and one of the recommendations was to increase the trolley hours, the routes, and, and have it year-round, and they were also, and, and two times, okay, so they also pointed out that our directional, um, traffic routes downtown probably could be reevaluated instead of having all these one ways and circuitous ways to get around to change it to two-way streets, and then they talked about parking issues. So the survey will be posted online on the city website under Main Streets, if you're interested in looking through all the, or critique of what they had of our community. It was fun working with them. I'm getting tired, the hour is late. The-
Is it your birthday today?
Oh.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Excuse me, it, it is not her birthday, it might be an anniversary of her birth, but it is not her birthday.
What? I don't look, okay. The second group that I got, we worked with to, that had an opportunity to see our community through new eyes was yesterday when we met with the Professor Robert Rebe and Oregon's, excuse me, University of Oregon students that are landscape architecture students, and with their drawings and their design ideas for downtown Oregon City, and then a little piece of Westland by the police station. So they were, their, I, design ideas were very focused this time, unlike me at this hour. No, I shouldn't say that. So they, I had to tell you, so, it was so much fun, they had all the three-dimensional models and things of ideas of how to recreate downtown in a positive way, and one of the fun ones was that we've talked about is the Singer Creek Falls, how they cascade down and that they were, said they were going to build a wall right on the railroad platform there, and then close off 8th Street and continue them down another block to make a public plaza and shut the street off. It was really very lovely. And then the next block, yeah, that was a neat idea. And then I have to say for some of our audience listening at home, specifically Mr. Phil Yates, that one whole student did a project on what to do with rooftops. So Phil had a lot of good ideas, but this person had even more than Phil, and Phil was on either gardens, which was kind of fun, and then he was on art. Well, this person drew up all the important historical figures of Oregon City, that could be another theme, and then they also even embellished it to have lighting, so what those rooftops would look like at night, but all just kind of creative ideas, so. That group for our Willamette Falls Heritage Area is really falling together, and last week I did not thank enough, is the State Park Service and Mark Davison, they have been just so helpful putting this whole project or these ideas together. So on that note, do you want to?
Um, yes, this is Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, the group that's working to advance the, a national heritage area in the area between the Clackamas River and the Thewolton, and a group of that coalition, including the tribes and the users of the river and the industrial users and environmentalists and boaters, et cetera, we're meeting with Congressman Schrader's office at his request, because he has a staff person that's very, very interested in getting us some funding, whether the funding would be to do the master plan, which is required to apply, but what we're going to talk about tomorrow is a dedicated staff person. If Schrader could find us some funding for a staff person to help us advance, to fill in the holes of the things we need to do for that application, and one of them is we need to determine the boundaries, we need to determine the organization that will be required to put it together, we need to have published concept plans, and the magic of the student work, now that this is the third group, they definitely had some very doable projects in with some of the fantasy as well, and I came away very excited last night too, because it certainly stretched my thinking, a lot of old ideas with new clothes, which I thought fit very well, so it's, it's, it's kind of exciting how it's beginning to, to revolve.
And I didn't finish my thought, but same with, that was the other group, that they re, they suggested using the trolley all year round, expanding the area it went to, and they also had many ideas of redesigning the downtown traffic to put it two-way instead of one-way, and then the other thing that was kind of fun is they had a, a map of all the parking downtown, and my goodness, I couldn't believe how much there is, so it's really going to be an interesting management challenge to, to get it, but the parking is there, it's just how we can better manage it. So, thank you.
I missed that presentation. Is that going to be compiled in a book?
Yes, yeah, well, it, not just, that may, yeah, the student work may be, may be available online, but what we're going to do is to take the three studios that we've had and take the best of them and put them together in a presentational thing, but because one of the missing pieces is we have not done a public involvement piece. We wanted to make sure we had our ideas sort of together, so for people to augment and react to. So the public involvement process will use, I'm sure, some of this student work.
Does Lloyd have all of these drawings?
No.
No, he doesn't. No, he doesn't. The professor does, but.
Yeah, we have. And, and they'll likely go on our website, which State Parks is creating for us. So I'll let you know when that happens, so you can see, so you can see them. I actually have a booklet that they gave me yesterday, too, that I forgot to bring. So I'll bring that and share that with you as well. Thank you. Just a couple of things.
Just to follow up on this particular topic, went, went to the presentation, Main Street Consultants, and they alluded to something that we actually had a complaint about, and that was the smokers on the sidewalks under our current thing. And we actually had somebody complaining about the noise level here at the commission meeting and so forth. So I would suggest a roof project should consider that being the note, the smoking area for the city.
Wouldn't that be fun?
Send all the smokers onto the roof.
I like Kentucky.
A great view from the elevator. Okay.
And on that note.
I'll try to make mine short, but this has been a huge couple of weeks of, of public involvement, huge community meetings on very topical things. And I think probably the most positive one was the Willamette Falls Hospital Providence merger meeting. Actually, they're calling it a partnership, but it's essentially a merger. And I just, I did, I, it was an opportunity for the public to come and get their questions answered about what that would mean to healthcare services in the long term. And I don't know if you saw in the paper, but this was amazing to me, that Providence has committed to the Willamette Falls Hospital Foundation to double the size of it by giving $3.5 million to the foundation. And I told them I had some projects in mind. But that will be a pretty, that's a pretty, pretty impressive contribution. They've also given Willamette Falls Hospital $55 million over seven years that the hospital can use for capital improvements. So I think they're here to stay. They seem very serious about their willingness to work together. So I wanted to share that with you. And then I think almost all of you were at at least one of the ODOT meetings with the Arch Bridge, which were informative. And I carried the message both times from us that we want sidewalks, we want better signage, we want mitigation in the downtown. And I think thanks to the Main Street Program and Lloyd Purdy and those who are working in the downtown area, and I feel that the businesses are beginning to come together to talk about group marketing, about drawing people downtown, having the bridge closure be an attraction rather than a detraction. So I really like the, the new combination of thinking. I also think that ODOT ought to study PR techniques, but otherwise, they did give an informative presentation.
And just for the record, it's now the West Lynn Oregon City Arch Bridge Restoration Project.
Yes, which is structural. It's, it's, they wouldn't be doing if it didn't have structural needs.
Yeah.
So that was an important learning from, from that. For Oregon City, again, having our 150th, don't forget the rose parade. But we also have another thing happening on June 10th. Ezra Meeker.
Oh, yeah.
Was a famous pioneer. And the, there's a reenactment group bringing a wagon, I don't know how many wagons they're actually bringing, but to the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center. From noon to 5:00 on June 10th, you can come down and hear a reenactor of Ezra Meeker. You can hear some people talking about the significance of, of what he did in marking the Oregon Trail. Should be really a fun time. So that's in advance. Do I have anything else? Well, the Regional Reserves Meeting, we've had ours too. And I think the most depressing piece of news was that the, that the timeline's been extended. But the, the good news is, it needed to be extended. There's way more discussion, and it's beginning to hit people's radar right now, that these are very important decisions that we're making together that affect, you know, the future of the region. Spent all day Saturday at, two weeks ago, at the J-PACT Retreat. Nancy Crashhour was there also. And we basically talked about regional funding options. And we talked about raising the TriMet tax by one cent. Is that right? Yeah. But from one cent to two cents, and talked about what that would do for transit in the region. It would really do a lot. We talked about a regional gas tax, a regional street utility fund, like our pavement management fee. And the discussions really focused on what would we believe was the, would raise the most funds and funds and be the most responsible, publicly acceptable mechanism to, to do that. We didn't really come to conclusions, but we'll be discussing that at future J-PACT meetings. So if you have ideas on that, there are all the things that I know of that are happening, happening in the legislature right now. We, we may not, we can't put a gas tax in, because that's part of the transportation package prohibitions, at least for four years. We can't raise the vehicle registration fee. There's a prohibition on that, I believe, as well. But we can keep our pavement, our street maintenance fees. And so many, many communities are beginning to put those in, because there's a direct benefit from that fee to the pavement on the ground. So you'll be hearing way more about those, those things. And I think that's, I think that's it. Any other, yes, Commissioner?
I attended most of the last IMPACT meeting, and one thing came up, and I think it should go onto all our radars, because apparently a west-side rail system, rapid rail system is being considered as opposed to Amtrak operating on our track line. Of course, that's something that's going to probably be in, in the future. But in fact, there are discussions about approving the link from, from Eugene ultimately to Seattle with a rapid line. I think it's on our interest to see that rail system come through Oregon City. And the, the freight rail system is, Peter DeFazio, Representative Peter DeFazio has put forward a bill creating tax credit to freight rail systems to improve their infrastructure. It seems to me that we ought to find mechanisms to maybe piggyback on that, that those kinds of, those kinds of improvements should be done in such a way that enable better use for, for in fact passenger rail on the system. Oftentimes, the, our times between Eugene and Seattle aren't too bad, but the coal starlight is often delayed by hours simply because of the freight traffic that it encounters. But I think we, and I don't know how to do it, maybe we need to talk about a study session, but the rails already exist here. And I would imagine there to have to be a tremendous investment in, in capital in order to have the rail system operate on the west side of the metro area as opposed to on our side of the system, given we have some capacity. So at one point or another, I think we need to bring this, because of our personal interest.
Yes, high-capacity transit is, I know Nancy and I have been talking about putting some things on the radar, streetcar, for instance. Can that come down here? Maybe not. But we're looking at the connectors, because there are many proposals out there, whether they can be, all be funded or not. Yes, we all, we all need to be aware of those opportunities. So thank you. There's no further business? We are, oh, yes. Oh, sorry, we are going into executive.
Five.
Oh, Commissioner Smith.
I apologize. I was getting flagged by people in the audience, and I realize that I'm really bad at reading lips. I thought they were trying to ask me what date the History and Roses Tour was, but they were actually trying to tell me to announce about it. So June 13th, as part of the Rose Festival celebration, is the History and Roses Tour, which focuses actually this year wonderfully on Oregon City. And I believe it's all four of the museum houses that are open that day with, with lots of, you know, different focuses on, on, on history and our city. So I think if people get a chance to attend that event, I believe the trolley hopefully will be running that day. I'm not sure.
I think that's when it starts.
Does it start that weekend?
I think it starts that weekend.
I hope. I don't know.
I haven't gotten that for sure.
But definitely go visit the museum houses that weekend, or on the 13th.
There's a brochure.
PortlandRoseFestival.com or dot org, I believe. Dot org.
Yeah. I have copied the brochure, too.
I think they're on the counter.
Yeah, well, they were. Okay, we are adjourned to executive.